I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on March 26, 2019. At this time, our pledge of allegiance to the flag and presentation of colors will be by the Vero Beach High School Air Force Junior ROTC Detachment 043, under the direction of Wade E. Douge, Chief Master Sergeant, retired, and Colonel Michael Zoller, Air Force United's USAFF.
Greetings and ops.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, ops. Cover your arms, pose, ops. All in, watch.
Fantastic job as always. Can we give our students at Vero Beach High School a hand? We appreciate them and thank them so much for dedicating their time to come out and do this every once a month on a Tuesday. At this time, we are moving on to adoption of orders of the day. Board members, are there any items that you wish to move from consent to action?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Item F, oh, sorry.
Okay, item F.
Um, sorry, let me just get there. Yes, Madam Chair, item F is the timeline for the superintendent's assessment for 2018-2019 school year. On the bottom, do I bring it up now or do we just hold it?
Yeah. No? Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the orders of the day with pulling consent F to action.
Move approval of the adoption of the orders of the day as amended.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Stosses with a motion and then Dr. Schiff with a second. Mrs. Stosses, do you care to speak to your motion?
No, ma'am.
Nope? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. At this time, I would like to recognize Dr. Rendell for a series of presentations. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are in for a treat tonight. We are going to begin our board meeting with a musical performance by some talented students at Liberty Magnet Elementary School. Then we're going to watch a short video on a new app, very exciting. And then we're going to see some of our students honored by a local lawyer who sponsors a Christmas card contest every year. It's quite amazing. So we're going to hear from our talented students, learn about a new app, and then also honor some of our kids for their artistic talents. And I'll turn it over to Kristin Maddox, our Public Information Officer.
Hello and good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask Liberty Magnet to start coming out right now. They have a little bit of setting up to do. So tonight, we have this group, Eagle Sound, from Liberty Magnet School, and they are under the direction of Sherri St. Petrie. And they're made up of 4th and 5th grade students who gather to practice two times a week. The students will be performing "The Midi Maddy Rag" by Jeff Henson and their "100 Years Vero Beach Song" in tribute to our city's centennial celebration. Great job, everyone. If I could get you to just come together a little bit towards the middle so I can fit all of you in the picture. All right, and you can actually hold those pictures right up in front of you.
Put them by your belly.
Yeah, right by your belly so we can see everyone behind you two. Got them all going the right way? Okay. Can we come together just a little bit closer, guys? Yes. All right. Everyone, okay, ready? One, two, and three. You two on the end right here, just take a little bit, there we go. Okay, one, two, and three. All right, parents, I told them to freeze for you, so let me get out of your way and get a good picture. Okay, let's give them another round of applause. Great job, guys. And while they are picking up their instruments and leaving, I failed to inform you that they performed this centennial song, the special song, at the Centennial Tree Planning Ceremony that happened at their school earlier this year. And they were also recently featured, singing as part of the Vero Beach Centennial Celebration Story on WQCX 88.9. That's the local NPR station. And you can still visit the WQCX website and hear that story. So, great job, and look at how strong they are. Thank you, parents, for helping. I hope the middle schools are ready for this group because they have some great rhythm already. Got it?
Thanks so much.
Okay, so next, we have a video for you, and it's very exciting because just a few weeks ago, we launched our new website. And now, we have a new mobile app. And I can't tell you how hard our IT department has been working on coordinating this and getting this launch together. And so I want to thank them, first of all. I know we have some members here, Greg and Brian, and I don't know if anyone else is here, but thank you so much for working so hard on this. And what we aim to do was to have a very user-friendly platform in the palm of your hand that has all the very important buttons that people are normally clicking on the website, right here on your mobile device. And you can download it for free, for Android or for Apple. And when you go and search for SDIRC in either one of those stores, you'll see our SDIRC logo. And within that app, which the video will explain, I'm just really excited, so I'm telling you about it too, we have lunch menus, schedules, maps, calendars, access to our social media. You can have calendar updates that you can add straight to the calendar on your phone from your school's events. And you can pick and choose what schools you want notifications for. So if you're like me, you can choose all of them, and you'd be very busy getting notifications all day, but you'll know everything going on in the district. So here's a video about our new mobile app. Stay in touch with the school district of Indian River County by downloading our new mobile app. Download on your mobile device today using the Apple App Store or the Google Play Store. Some of the app's key features include push notifications. Select yes when you download the app to receive the latest push notifications from our district and the schools of your choice. Visit the schools section for quick access to your school's phone number, website information, and staff directory. Click to call or visit the website. Add events to the calendar on your personal mobile device directly from the calendar section on the app. Check out the latest district-wide and school news all in one place. The school district of Indian River County, keeping our community connected. So we hope that you will enjoy this and that it will be very easy for you to stay connected with the district. And just keep in mind that we are still working together with all of our schools to have them update their calendars, and everyone is still getting on board. It is quite a process. So you will continue to see new feeds and new things on the app. But right now, if you can just go and download it and start to explore and play around, I think that you'll see that it's a pretty neat tool to have on your phone. Next, we have the Tuttle Holiday Card Contest winners, and I'd like to introduce Mary Therese Van Hollenbeck, who is the Special Programs Coordinator for Arts for All, presenting the award to the winner of the Tuttle Holiday Card Contest. Mary Therese?
The Arts for All is a nonprofit organization that's housed at the University of South Florida in Tampa. And the name has changed throughout the years. It used to be Very Special Arts, it used to be VSA Florida, and now it's Arts for All Florida. But the mission of the organization has remained the same, and that is to provide support and champion arts education and cultural experiences for and by people with disabilities. Their vision, as well as ours, is to create a world in which the arts are universally accessible. In our district, we have two programs that we co-sponsor with Arts for All Florida. And the first one that I want to kind of do a plug on is we, every year, we have a Performing Arts Evening. And this year, it is April 9, and it is at the Vero Beach High School Performing Arts Center at 6:30, and it is free to the public. The evening is a celebration of all forms of artistic expression and provides an opportunity for individuals of all ages and abilities to showcase their interests and their talents. The ESE students, general education students performing with our ESE students, teachers, parents, and community members with disabilities and exceptional talents are all invited to participate in this show. So we cordially invite you, it's free, Tuesday, April 9, at 6:30. The other reason that we're here tonight is to award, to recognize, as Kristin said, the winner of the annual Tuttle Holiday Card Contest. And Mr. Douglas Tuttle is an attorney in our fair city, and this is the 17th year that he has sponsored this contest. And it is for the students, now it is pre-K and elementary school students, to submit artwork that depicts the holiday. And the winner receives a cash award, and in addition, receives a certificate to the Vero Beach Book Center, which is really lovely because it nicely married the literacy and the arts. So it's a wonderful twofer. And so this evening, we want to acknowledge the winner, and we have another first for this contest. Usually, it's an individual. And as I said, the individual wins a cash award, but also, through your generosity, all the students who submit artwork receive the gift certificate to the Vero Beach Book Center. So it's really a very, very lovely thing that you have done for 17 years, and I encourage you to continue because we love it and the children just thoroughly enjoy it. I just want to say that this year, instead of an individual, it's a classroom that has one. And the classroom is the pre-K ESE classroom at Vero Beach Elementary, and the teacher is Colleen Mulcahy-Ladizinski. And she is affectionately called as Miss Colleen, and we know why. And I just want to say that when Mr. Tuttle came in and he had a couple of your colleagues with you, the teachers and the assistants were in tears. And the reason why is because, no, I'm going to cry, is because it's so nice to have our children appreciated and valued, and we thank you from the bottom of our heart. So we'd like to have Miss Colleen come here, and you have a classmate here that's, I mean, a, yes, she's a student, Ms. Vindanci Lombacia, who is a student in Miss Colleen's class, so she's going to represent her class.
Miss Colleen, we have a plaque for you, and we want to thank your class for their beautiful artwork. We had such a nice time visiting your class when we came to get our picture taken, so that's for you.
This is awesome, thank you. And we have this for you.
Thank you very much, thank you. And we also want to recognize MT, Mary Therese. She has helped us so much every year, we couldn't do the contest without her. It's really, we think of it as her contest that we help her with. And her enthusiasm for the children is really an inspiration and a constant reminder of what the contest is all about, and that's encouraging these exceptional students in her art. And it's just been such a blessing for our law firm to participate in this, and we thank you so much.
Thank you, Doug, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We just appreciate you so much.
We had such a great time, so much to see you.
We'll have to come back and get some.
We would thank you to see you.
Well, we have to get a picture with this dress on. Would you like to join up front, too? You're definitely dressed for pictures tonight. I'm going to take one second, right. There we go. Okay, everyone, ready? One, two, and three. Ready? Got it, Mom? You've got pictures.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Good to see you again, see you next year.
At this time, it is our citizen input portion of the meeting. Each speaker is going to be given up to three minutes for their time. Mr. Brian Whiting and then Mr. Mike Young.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Rendell. I started working for the school district in 1993. At that time, people were hired with a step system in place. The steps were a system of gradual pay increases in the job he or she was applying for over the course of 15 years. With the steps, you could come in with two years' experience at that time, and instead of starting at step one, you would start at step three. And every year after that, you would get a slight increase until you were topped out. After that, the only pay increases the employee would receive was the cost of living bargained for by the CWA. This was a fair system, and it worked well. After the crash or the bubble burst, or whatever you want to call it, after the 2008 fiasco, the administration came to the then-president of the CWA and told him, "We can keep the steps, but people will lose their jobs. Or we can lose the steps and everybody will keep their jobs." The president did what we all would probably have done and allowed the steps to be taken away. For the next 11 years, there has been no means of an employee raising their pay. The incentive pay was removed, as well as pay for further education in your field or trade. And of course, there was no cost of living raises given or overtime. Now, when an employee is hired, he is locked into that wage until he changes jobs or quits. Because the district was unable to hire people, they allowed the people to bring up to 10 years' experience to the job. This allowed more hiring to take place, but it penalized the workers who had 10 years or better with the district and that were still at step one or two or higher. None of their experience was taken into consideration. As you can imagine, this was a real boost for morale. The step system allowed the district to take an unskilled worker and teach him a trade. It gave the employee self-respect, seeing his pay increase every year, and he learned the operating systems of the schools and what we were using. The managers knew the skill level of their employees. And if you think of this, the employee hired even now, even if he brings anything less than the topped-out experience, he is also locked into that very same wage. What is happening now is people will take the jobs with the district, become trained, and then go to a neighboring county to be hired at a higher rate of pay. This is happening in transportation with our bus drivers right now. The CWA represents just over 700 employees. By our count, there's about 170 employees not topped out or corrected. To correct this injustice would be monetarily insignificant, but the rewards reaped by the district would be amazing. Retention of skilled employees and the ability to attract new employees in an ever-tightening job market, it just makes good financial sense. Check for yourself the proposed cost to the district. I'm sure several of the board members and those watching this meeting are business owners, and I know that hiring and keeping well-trained employees is vital to the success of any business. Our business is education for the future generations that are produced. How can anything be more important than that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Young. And then after Mr. Young, we have Mr. Anthony Stewart.
Hi, good evening. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Little League Baseball in Vero Beach, I want to say thank you for everything that you guys do for not only the students but the families of Indian River County. We really appreciate all that you do. Since my last visit here, we had an amazing and fun-filled first half of our season. We started the season with an opening day celebration at historic Dodger Town where parents, players, and families enjoyed a fun-filled day of activities celebrating the beginning of the season. We've begun our games at South County Regional Park, where we've played over 50 games and have reached the halfway point with spring break. We gave the kids a week off, and we're just getting back into things this week. We have players ranging from four years old to 12 years old, and our primary focus has been to instill the values that these players will need to mentally and physically be ready to play baseball at the middle school level and far beyond when they're done swinging a bat. We, as a board, wholeheartedly believe that the values that these children learn today, they will take on for the rest of their lives. The values that the school district leaders, that the teachers, that the coaches instill in these children and players are second to none. I wanted to share a quick story. We had a small win last week right before spring break, the last at-bat. We have a player named Patrick, and he had, I was umpiring a game the day before, the two days before, and the pitch came inside, and he backed up, and he said, "Sir, I don't think I want to play baseball anymore." And I said, "What's the matter?" And he said, "That almost hit me, I'm really nervous." And I said, "Well, get back in there, you can do it." And he struck out. And the next at-bat, he struck out again. But he kept coming back up to the plate. And then the next two days later, on Saturday, he had a game, and we were just about to leave for spring break, and he said, "Coach Mike, I'm going to get a hit today." And I wasn't umpiring that game, so I sat behind home plate, and I watched him, and he struck out again, and then he struck out again, and then in the bottom of the last inning, almost poetic, he got a double. And the look on his face said, "I did it." And that's why we're there. That's the whole reason that Little League Baseball is Little League Baseball and why we love it. So I just wanted to come here, give you guys a brief update on our season, how it's going, and let you know that we thank you guys, and with your support and the overwhelming support of the community, we've had a fantastic beginning half of our season. And I wanted to extend an invitation to everybody again to come out any Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. We're at South County Park. On the weekdays, it starts around 6:00, and on the weekend, on Saturday, it starts at 9:00 AM. Thank you again, and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you. Okay, Mr. Anthony Stewart, and then Mrs. Liz Cannon.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Rendell. I was here in September with my twins, and you all awarded them five-year perfect attendance certificates. But today, I'm here on a different note. First, I want to share some things with you concerning some stats. World-class Olympian athlete, Willma Rudolph, TV talk show host, entertainment entrepreneur, Oprah Winfrey, All-Pro defensive end, Tootall Jones, award-winning journalist and philanthropist, Carl Rowan, engineer Jesse Russell, whose pioneering engineers studies led to the development of the cell phone, cardiac surgeon- Cardiac surgeon, Dr. Levi Watkins, who implanted the first heart defibrillator. All are black. All went to one black historical college. And they all made major contributions within the last fifty-five years to this American society. Yet, I'm kind of, I don't know, troubled by the fact I came and got some stats from the school board. And what I found...
If you could speak into the mic so that everyone could hear you in the mic, yep.
And what I found was this. That blacks making up twenty-four percent of all ESE students in this county. Whites make up sixteen percent. Blacks make up fifty-three percent of all alternative ed students in this county. Whites make up eighteen percent. Blacks make up seven point nine percent of the advanced, that's enroll in advanced classes. Whites make up sixty-four percent of enrollment in blacks' classes. Honor students, ten point seven black, sixty-two point eight white. I find those very difficult to understand. If these blacks from this one university can make the type of contributions to a society in fifty-five years, why is it taking the school board and the local NAACP fifty-five years to get our kids on an equal level? I was appalled too, even to come in and see the kids here that were playing their instruments and things, because I was the percussion. I went to college on a percussion, on a music scholarship. I was elated to see this, but I was disappointed because there was not one black among them. According to the Joint Plan of Achievement of the Unitary Status Section, section number six, African-American students achievement whose goal was to eliminate the achievement gap in minority students. That gap has been there over fifty-some years.
Mr. Stewart, I do apologize, but the time is up, so if you can wrap it up...
I didn't hear the bell ring, and even after the other person came, the bell, you let them stay. But that's okay, I have no problem with that.
I'm just asking you to wrap up.
I wait till the next, I wait till the next two weeks and I'll be back.
No, we appreciate your input.
And, but also too, there are some things that need be done. And the reason that gap is, Dr. Rendell, is not because of the hiring of minority students, et cetera. It's because of the teachers that you have in place now. Do not treat the blacks the way they treat other students. This is why we have a problem. Every day, I pick up my kids from their school and I see little white kids that they are together with the teachers and the teachers seem to be interrelating with them. And you see these minority kids just standing over by themselves. It is not right what's happening to our kids. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, thank you. Mrs. Cannon.
Good evening. I would like to commend the school board on their list of legislative priorities. Each of these issues is necessary to help bring forward the needs of our students. The safe schools allocation is imperative, but I do want to encourage you to include the need for law enforcement personnel on each campus rather than arming teachers. A Gallup poll done last year says seventy-three percent of teachers oppose staff carrying weapons on campus. When we look at the best ways to keep our children safe, the best way to do that is to have the people who have trained extensively and who are specifically tasked with keeping our students safe, students and staff safe. In order to ensure allocation is appropriately designated, our legislature needs to permit local control regarding how these funds are spent. The best and brightest scholarship program, designed to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers, has not served that purpose. Reallocating these funds to salaries for all educators is a much better use of this money. Aside from the exclusions of so many teachers due to the specificity of this ludicrous law, the amount of time and manpower that each district must use to determine eligibility and establish the process is also draining valuable resources from our district. We have lost countless hours of productivity just to this one program that needs to be communicated to our legislature. The hidden cost of such a program. I would imagine Mike Smeltzer's time could have been used in many far better ways than this program. The base student allocation is another serious issue. While our legislators tout that funding is higher than ever, we still have not caught up to the cuts of 2008 when you account for inflation. It costs far more to educate our students now than it ever has before. The number of unfunded mandates has seemingly exploded, but just asking them to increase is not enough. Our legislature needs specifics. At the end of this school year, the Florida Department of Education is projecting that there will be more than ten thousand teacher vacancies and many Florida students will next year start without a permanent, fully-certified teacher. Here's why. Florida spends less on education today than before the Great Recession. We have one of the largest economies in the nation, but we are in the bottom ten states in per pupil spending and number forty-seven in teacher pay. Local school districts are allowed too little control in how money is spent, which means that administrators, educators, and parents have little flexibility in how they invest in student success and school safety. Teacher pay is linked to a flawed evaluation system tied to a single standardized test. One bubble test does not measure a student's curiosity, imagination, or academic growth. Teachers have contracts that expire at the end of every school year and often leave because they are left in limbo waiting to hear if they will have a job in August. Many college students have too much debt to pursue low-salaried teachers' teaching careers. So please, include all of this along with what you've listed in your legislative priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cannon. Okay, so that ends our citizen input. At this time, we are moving on to our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Second.
And then Mrs. Justice. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt. Usually, after the consent agenda, if there's been a promotion, promotion approved by the board during the consent agenda, I ask the person who's been promoted to come to the podium. We didn't promote anybody tonight necessarily to those positions, but we have in the past couple of months and those people were not here on those occasions. So I'd like to give them the opportunity to speak tonight. So first, I'd like to ask Michelle Olp to come up to the podium. Michelle's our new Director of Employee and Labor Relations. She's coming to us from the sunny climate of Michigan. So I'm sure she's excited to be here. Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Good evening Board, good evening citizens. I wanna thank you first for employing me. I'm so excited about being here. I've already seen just a wonderful place to be. I've seen committed teachers. I've seen dedicated, you know, Dr. Rendell and that staff, everyone in that building. I've met Javon. And I've had some wonderful introductions with the CWA and I've recently started meeting people in the IRC EA. So I'm very excited about the opportunity in front of me. I think that this district has a great story to tell already and has a bright future in front of it. And I hope to be a significant contributor to that future. You know, I hope to work with the unions and the teachers and you, the board, to come up with win-wins for the district so we can move forward, even in challenging environments. One thing I noticed off the bat is there's a lot of gators here. So I just have to say it, I just have to say that my Spartans are in the Sweet Sixteen. So I'm just making a note of that for the record. I've already been hassled quite a bit. But I do wanna say, you know, just coming from the outside, boy, you guys have such a good story to tell and you should be very proud of the accomplishments of this district. You know, I've seen districts in Detroit. I've seen districts in Saginaw, Michigan, Flint, Michigan, other places I've lived, you know, out in Washington and in Tennessee. And I have to say that I already see that this is a very blessed community and a very blessed group of individuals that are committed to working together. And I really like seeing that. So I have to compliment you all on that. And you, Dr. Rendell, for leading that effort. So, thank you so much for inviting me to be here and for the warm welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to ask Greg McDonald to come up to the podium. Greg is officially our new Director of Information Technology and he was on vacation when he was promoted a couple of weeks ago. And he actually cut his vacation short to come back in to take care of some information technology issues we were having last week. So Greg, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Good evening Board, good evening Dr. Rendell. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. Most importantly, being part of this group for over five years now, I know the people and very happy to be working with them. They're a very talented group and just look forward to doing a lot of good things here in the district and serving the IT needs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that indulgence.
Okay. So at this time, we're gonna move on to action. We did have one item moved from consent over to action and that was item F, the timeline. Just give me one second here. If you could pull that from your backup so we can look at it as she's speaking to it. Do you have it? You ready? Does everybody have it? Okay. Mrs. Rosario.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On the timeline, as I was reviewing it for this evening, I realized that what was not included under goals for 2019, 2020, all the way on the bottom, we do not have added there a new timeline for assessment for the new coming year. So I'm requesting that the superintendent have that added in and then bring it back to us for another future approval. So, moving forward, we won't have what we had this year, which was, you know, an opportunity to miss not having the timeline in place. So that's what I would like to have added.
Can you repeat that?
This timeline is not included in the future 2019, 2020 school year. So the superintendent needs to add on the bottom there, our approval for his upcoming year. The same exact thing, but for the next year. He needs this timeline for the next year to be included on his timeline. Okay. This timeline is only for this school year, 2018, 2019. We don't have one for 2019, 2020. So the superintendent needs to add on the bottom the adoption, in addition, see where it says adoption of superintendent goals? We also need a separate line that says adoption of or approval of superintendent timeline for assessment 2019, 2020.
Did we have it like that in the past?
We have not.
Okay, so...
And therefore, and this year, we missed. This year, there was no timeline. You didn't, he didn't have it in the past and this year, we did not have it. That's why we're doing it now, because we missed this year. It wasn't on whenever timeline it should have been. So I'm suggesting we put it on there so we don't miss that opportunity and we don't have to redo this again some months into the new school year already.
So you want the timeline for...
2019, 2020. Dr. Rendell and I talked about this, so he's...
Typically, what I remember, what I think I remember is that we do adopt this in a timely manner, but I think the new board was just, or the outgoing board was just waiting for the new board to come in?
In the past, I think this has been something that the chair did or the board secretary did. When we completed the evaluation process last July and August, we didn't adopt a timeline for this year. I believe that all Mrs. Rosario is asking is we add a line with one of those dates or another date that says, you know, could be the same date as August 27, 2019, adoption of the timeline for 2019, 2020. That's all the request is, I believe.
Well, we don't need to bring that back if we can come to consensus on a date, correct?
Correct, you could amend the timeline and improve it tonight.
Perfect. So what would be a good date for that?
I think the 27th, just do it on the 27th. You're gonna adopt the goals for 1920 and the timeline for 1920.
And the timeline on the same day, yeah.
2019. All right, any discussion on that, board members? No?
No.
I did have a couple of questions. I wanted to, I wanted to look at the mid-year review, which was January. Because we had a new board coming in, I don't think they had... I just wanted to ask, because this is the only time we talked, as board members feel that they've had enough information to be able to discuss with the superintendent. Typically, it is in January, but I would encourage you to, if you've not yet. Part of it is mid-year review, which I know you came in in November, but board members are encouraged to have a mid-year discussion with the superintendent. So I don't, this is something that board members are, it's very encouraged for board members to do. And then also, I wanna look down at final action on 7/23/2019. Business meeting approval of the superintendent's 2018-19 composite assessment of performance and goals. So I'm just assuming that everyone's familiar with what that is. That's where we will calculate and composite the evaluation and then that would be the time that we would talk about it. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. And then, let's see. Superintendent Annual Progress Report, 7/1/2019. Okay. Deadline to submit individual assessments to Nancy Esplin in the board office. And that, and I'm sorry if you already know this, but that is the absolute deadline for you to submit your signed, the signed evaluation that you had put together and you, it's gonna be up to you and Dr. Rendell to make the time to go through the evaluation together. And I really suggest that you do that at least a week, two weeks ahead so that you're not scrambling to try to get in on the last day of the 7/12. Okay? But typically, Mrs. Poyceau or Nancy will send out a reminder to remind you and then Dr. Rendell will open up his schedule to give you options of when to meet with him. So anyways, since this is the only time we can talk about it, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that on the timeline. All right. So, I need a motion for the timeline with the approval of adding 8/27 to 2019 for the date of the new adoption, or the new dates.
I make a motion? Second.
Okay. Hold on one second. Rosario. And then, Dr. Schiff. Nancy, did you get that amendment? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, actually, before you do that, any, no further discussion, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five zero.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on down to Action Item A. Approval of Bill of Sale for the Photovoltaic System located at Storm Grove Middle School from Florida Power and Light to the School Board of Indian River County. Mr., or Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In Action Item A, we're seeking approval for a bill of sale to transfer ownership from Florida Power and Light to the School Board of Indian River County for a solar panel system that is located at Storm Grove Middle School. We are actually just fulfilling a contract that was signed by the Board in 2013. We have several of these solar panels at different schools throughout the district. They do generate electricity, and we do power some things at our schools based on that, using that electricity. This was part of a program that we entered into with FPL, like I said, back in 2013, so we are now taking ownership over the equipment. So, we're seeking approval of that.
Okay. Move approval.
I'll second.
Mrs. Justice with the motion, and then Mrs. Barrenburg with a second. Mrs. Justice, do you care to speak to your motion?
No, ma'am. No, I'm fine.
No. Any further discussion?
Quick question. Are there any costs associated with that?
There'll be some maintenance costs for the equipment going through the years, but we do generate electric, you know, power, electrical power through the use of the system. So, I mean, Mr. Teske, do you have any numbers or anything to share?
Yes, sir, you are correct. We're now working with FPNO. We're going to do a cost analysis to see what we are saving and then apply that to the maintenance costs. By 2020, we'll be bringing the other eight locations to you. Some are grouped together and some are individual, and at that time, we'll have more information from you to be able to share what we are saving and applying it to the maintenance and the inspections that'll be required from that.
Thanks. Okay. Any further discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five zero.
Moving on to Action Item B. Approval to award SDIRC 10-0-2019 JC Invitation to Bid for a Single Point of Entry to Bill Bryant and Associates. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, Action Item B and Action Item C are related. In Action Item B, we're asking approval to award the invitation to bid to Bill Bryant and Associates for a single point of entry project at the school identified there. And then, Action Item C, it's the actual owner contract agreement with Bill Bryant and Associates to do the work. The project, the single point of entry project at this school, total cost is $498,780. So, in Action Item B, we're seeking approval to award the bid to Bill Bryant and Associates for this single point of entry work at the school, not identified in the Board, but the Board members do have access to that information.
Okay. I need a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Schiff? All right. Mrs. Justice?
I will speak to this in this item. The single point of entry projects that we're doing across the district, just for anyone looking at our agenda, just to note that we have chosen to not list the schools where we are doing those single points of entry for safety reasons. And I just want to say, I know there are a lot of different things regarding safety and security and different things that we can do on our school campuses, and this is one way that we can ensure that we know who's coming in and out of our schools. So, I continue to support these projects. They are expensive, but they are important, and I'm happy to support this tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Schiff?
I think I say this at every Board meeting, but just to clarify, this comes out of capital funds and not out of general funds, correct? And this has already been allocated for this purpose?
Thank you, Dr. Schiff, yes. The money associated with this project is in the capital fund. We reprioritize some projects in the capital fund, in the five-year capital plan, to make sure that we could get to work on these single point of entry projects. These are our priority. As Mrs. Justice mentioned, this is a safety and security issue. The idea is to control access into and out of our schools during the school day.
Okay. Any other discussion? Just for clarification, on this here, we were awarded a grant through the state for safe hardening of schools. Was this part of that funding in the capital, and it's put in there?
I'd have to ask Mr. Teske or Nick to verify where the funding for this project, whether it's from the grant or whether it's from the 1.5 million in capital that we reallocated.
Nick Westenberger, Director of Facilities. I came through the side door tonight. This is not from the security grant. We have not received those funds yet. We're still in the process of collecting those funds, so this was just capital money that we had set aside for the single point of entries.
Okay. All right. Do we have any idea when we're going to receive that money?
No, ma'am.
No? We just know we're getting it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as long as we know, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all I have. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five zero.
Okay, moving on to C. Approval of Owner-Contractor Construction Agreement for Single Point of Entry, SDIRC Number 10-0-2019 JC. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion item. This is the actual contract agreement with Bill Bryant and Associates to do this work at the school. Again, the total cost of the project is $498,780.
Okay. I need approval?
Move approval. I'll second.
Okay. Or a motion, I'm sorry. Mrs. Justice with a motion, and Mrs. Barrenburg with a second. Mrs. Justice?
No, ma'am. I made my comments in the previous item.
Okay.
I'd just like to see us keep moving along. I'm sure we're going to see more of these, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, moving on to D. Approval to issue a change order to PO 01900162. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In Action Item D, we're actually seeking approval to increase the total spend authority with Delta Automation Incorporated to $53,832.75. This is needed because of some work that we had to do at Storm Grove Middle School that's costing our estimated work with this company to go above the $50,000 threshold. So, we're asking for spend authority to increase with Delta Automation to $53,832.75.
Okay. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Barrenburg?
Second.
And Dr. Schiff? Okay. Did you get that? Okay, thank you. Do you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
In the letter, it said that this is due to an unbudgeted issue, and I know I discussed this with you about what the unbudgeted issue was, was it an emergency?
I'll have to see if Mr. Teske or Mr. Michael or Jeff, who's got the answer? It looks like Jeff.
Yes, ma'am. The issue at Storm Grove, are you asking specifically what it was?
Well, if you can say, I mean, I just want to know, was it something that we just didn't do our numbers, or is it something that was an emergency that we just didn't foresee?
It was an unforeseen emergency, breaking of water pipes, that type of thing. So, it wasn't security-related, it was safety-related?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. All right. Any other discuss, or I'm sorry. Dr. Schiff? No. Any other discussion?
May I just ask for a little bit of clarity, please? How does the water pipe affect the automation system? I mean, how, yeah? If you can just explain that.
The water lines that feed the life systems, if there's smoke or fire, the water that would be sprayed upon all of us in here, those had to be replaced and were damaged.
So, do we have an insurance policy with them, or like?
Yes, ma'am, we did.
Regular maintenance program? Is that not included in something like this?
The replacement of the water system was covered under the insurance.
Under our personal insurance? Not under the automation?
No, ma'am, not under the automation.
Delta automation?
No.
We don't have like, what would that be, like a maintenance program, a regular maintenance program? Should something happen, that it's already covered?
The Delta Automation, they had to monitor the site remotely on the weekends and nights when this replacement was occurring, so they're really not insurance-related. They're just a vendor that we work with on weekends and at nights regularly. So, we had to increase the time they needed to monitor the school, so that was the reason for the higher expenditure of funds. But we use them holidays, weekends, and nights. We definitely use them during the hurricanes, monitoring the generators. So, they were not insurance-related, no, ma'am.
So, if we are, if the cost of what was unbudgeted or the issue is $6,000, why are we requesting, why is it being requested $10,000? Why is $10,000 being requested?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have budgeted for this. This is basically the money that the physical plant has control over. We're asking permission to access it. We're not asking for additional funds.
Oh, I see.
These are the funds that have been allocated and budgeted and approved from the physical plant.
I understand.
So, since it's over the $50,000, we're asking permission just to draw the funds that we've already budgeted for to finish the year and get us through the summer.
I understand now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate that.
Any other discussion?
No.
No. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, moving on to E. Action Item E. Approval to dispose of surplus property. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In Action Item C, E, we are seeking approval to discharge, dispose of surplus property in accordance with Florida statutes. This property is to be deleted from various inventories and declared surplus. After the Board approval and it's declared surplus, the property will be recycled and/or auctioned.
Okay. Need a motion?
Move approval.
A second. Mrs. Justice with the motion, and then Mrs. Rosario with a second. Mrs. Justice?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. Rosario?
No, ma'am.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Okay. Moving on to F. Action Item F. Approval of Legislative Priorities. So, let's flip over to that if we could. So, this is the legislative priorities that we had discussed in our discussion session. And under the last item, increase the general operating dollars to sufficiently fund the costs for school districts, including salary benefits, mandatory employer contributions to the Florida retirement system, and increase fixed costs as such as utilities and insurance. So, it was asked that we be more specific and give more detail into this. So, if you notice, transportation funding, details was added to that, and then also more details to the exceptional student education and how the categories, the way that it's broke out into the, or it's lumped into category 101, 102, and 103, instead of the way it used to be where it was broke out. So, the cost factor, it would be more impactful if we could get the funding if it was separated, the categories were separated. So, this is something that we did discuss in our Board Discussion Session, so I would like a motion for approval, and then a second, and then we can talk about it.
Move approval.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Well, whatever.
Mrs. Justice, and then?
A second.
Mrs. Rosario. Okay. Mrs. Justice?
I want to thank Mrs. Zork for putting this together for us. This is something that we should have had done some time ago, and the Board has been somewhat preoccupied with some other different issues, and we haven't been as proactive as we should have been in doing the business of the Board and coming up with our legislative priorities to share with our legislators in Tallahassee. They are currently in session, so we are a little late, but better late than never. I am happy to see that we have a legislative, we have our legislative priorities down on paper, and we can move to approve it tonight. I think all of the points, our wonderful Dr. Rendell shared, the points on the first page, when our legislators were here, and with Debbie Mayfield and Erin Groll, and those were some that were shared directly with our representatives when they were here for, I think Legislative Days is what they called it. I appreciate the additions to the back, and as far as the specificity, you have heard me speak before about ESE and exceptional student education and there being a very large deficit in the funds that we spend versus the funds that we receive. This is specifically category 101, 102, and 103, and when I speak about a $16 million budget, that's everything that's in that 5,200 ESE function accounting line. So, while we look at serving students with exceptionalities who might be a Tier Four, Tier Five student, this is Level One, Two, and Three. Mrs. Zork, is my understanding that these numbers were something that you had worked with finance to come up with?
I did.
Okay. And if you're comfortable with these numbers, I'm comfortable going forward. One comment that I'd like to make, because Mrs. Cannon, the IRCA representative, was here tonight, had some things that she would like to add, and I took some notes here, and we could go through and amend this, and if we would like to do that, we can. I think she brought up a good point about the fact that when we go through discussion about our legislative priorities, that perhaps in the future, in the coming year, we make sure that we make time for discussion with our union representatives or anyone else that would like to come for discussion to hear some of their thoughts on making sure that all voices are heard in our legislative priorities, because we are representative of our community and of our teachers and of our staff. But I will, I am happy to support this tonight, and I'm happy to see the business of the Board, the true work of the Board being done.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Rosario?
I agree. I echo the same sentiments of the importance of this, of our legislative priorities. Safe schools, hardening of our facilities, mental health, truly an effort to let those in Tallahassee know how important it is to increase teacher salaries and so on and so forth. So, I just think it's incredibly important. As a new School Board member, new to the entire process, I look forward to what happens from here forward and participating in that in any way. So, I'm just excited to finally get this up and, you know, and rolling, get the ball rolling on this.
Okay. Dr. Schiff?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering two things. One, where we got specific on transportation funding, I'm wondering if we, the other ones don't have any specificity. And so, for example, increase the safe schools allocation to expand coverage of safe school officers. Right now, we're fortunate about our partnerships with law enforcement where some of the money comes from this and some of the money comes from law enforcement, but that, as I understand it, that money is not necessarily allocated to be ongoing. So, we don't actually know the cost of that. Is that right? Does anybody know that?
We know the cost of it, we just, if we, you're right, I mean, we didn't specify here.
Yeah, thank you. If Dr. Schiff is asking, the cost to have a school resource officer on every campus is about $2 million, and we get our personnel at Safe Schools funding, after we give the charters their share, we have about $900,000 left. So, we then have to go into the general fund. This year, it's about $120,000. So theoretically, the cost, if we were to say what the actual cost is to put a SRO at every campus, it's a little over $2 million. And so, we are right now using all of our $900,000 or so to pay for our 50% cost share with local law enforcement. But you're right, if local law enforcement was not sharing the cost with us, then our need would double, more than double.
So, I guess my question to my fellow Board members is, is with that, like the specificity, do we want to say what the cost is? Because as I understand it, again, forgive me if I don't get this quite right, but the money that was allocated is, was not necessarily ongoing money. For every year, we get this amount of money to provide this thing that we are mandated to provide. Is that right?
You are correct. It was a one-time funding as part of that legislation last year, so there is legislation So there is legislation already in the hopper right now in Tallahassee that would actually increase the safe schools allocation. Um, maybe not to two million dollars per, you know, for our district. But, um, but it is not, it is a annual bill right now.
Right, so it's an annual bill, so we don't know if there will be, i- it's not uncommon that bills get, get passed that mandate certain services without attaching either any budget or sufficient budget. So I'm wondering if we want to add our cost to this, saying that in order to fulfill this mandate, this is what it will cost us?
Um, can I just make a note, um, or just, in the past and typically with the one pager, that is, that's the priority. Then the second step typically is, when you're doing an elevator speech to a legislator, you might have five minutes. Um, you know, we were, if you notice, we were really smashing this together to get it and we, we made the margins even larger. So the problem, and I agree, the, you know, we can add that number in here. But typically what happens if, if we can get the appointment to get in with the legislator, we have the one pager, whi- which highlights it. And then we have the backup that we give the legislator, we give the, the staff person to help the legislator with the information, um, with our priority list. So that's why it's not diving deep, deep in the details because really we want them, we want to catch their attention and really highlight the fact that increase total funding for safe school allocation to accommodate growth and expand coverage of safe schools and officers. And so, a more descriptive, yes. But it's, it's very difficult to put all that into a one pager. But with the backup or if we want to add numbers, that, I, I think we still have room to add that. We can, we can add that, okay? But, I mean, our, our priority, if we look at it, our priorities aren't changing. We're just inserting some more dollar figures, is that?
I'm not asking for the priorities to change at the moment. I'm just saying that if we're getting specific about numbers, um, do we want to be consistent about that and what it's going to cost us?
Mm-hmm.
Because they're two different issues, right? One is, this is what we want, the other is, this is really what it's going to cost us.
This is what it's costing us.
I see.
Yes.
Um, I spent four of my, um, days during spring break in Tallahassee. I had five minutes with Senator Mayfield. I had over an hour with Representative Groll. Um, I went as a citizen, however, I am an educator. So I did bring up my priorities personally, which were very similar to what I heard tonight. Um, and they do want to hear specifics. That's the one thing I heard from both of them, is they, tell me exactly why it's a problem. Yes, you're, you're asking us for money, everybody wants money. But tell us exactly what's being funded and how much it's being underfunded. One of them was shocked at how underfunded one of the things was. The other one was not shocked at all and asked me lots of questions. So, um, I will say this, yes, you want to give them this document, but you have to provide at the same time that backup that she's referring to. Because I think they really want to know the numbers. What is it that it costs you to actually do this? And what is it that we actually funded? And they want those numbers because they can use those numbers when they're talking. Um, the other thing I will say is, one of the things that was brought up tonight, um, thank you, Ms. Cannon, um, that I brought up personally was the base student allocation funding. And, um, I didn't realize that we haven't caught up to two thousand and eight, was it, with inflation? And that's an important thing to say. So if we can back that up with documentation that here's where we are and we haven't caught up to inflation and this is what is, those are the specifics that we need to give them, not we need more money. We need to be very specific in our ask. And, uh, there's a lot going on up there. I sat in on several committees, which I'll refer to at the end of this, um, meeting tonight, um, which is fascinating to do. So I encourage you all to do that, but I also encourage you all to pick up the phone or, um, have some time with them. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that because, um, last year when I was meeting with, I want to say Dr. Mayfield, but Mrs. Mayfield and, um, and, um, she was very inquisitive. You know, give me the details, give me the numbers because that's what they do need whenever they're going out and making our argument for, for why, why they, she needs, um, support on it. So I do agree with that. So absolutely, typically I, when I go up there, I do have a lot of backup support that I do give them. Um, and I would, I'd love to be able to, I'm going to share that with everyone, the backup that I have to match, match this here.
Mrs. Justice is looking to get a word in and then I have another word.
I'm over here, sorry about that. Um, so, uh, yeah, I actually agree with Dr. Schiff. I think the specificity is important and I'm happy Mrs. Baronberg has shared, uh, that with us. And so are you thinking about adding in the fact that our overall cost is two million dollars? That we have a cost share, that we receive nine hundred thou? Or do you want to do a percentage perhaps? How would you like, how do you envision this changing?
What I'm hearing, um, sort of across the board and, and, and from, um, Mrs. Cannon, I don't think we want, like, this is what it costs, this is what we, it's too much detail. We want a number. Like this is what it's going to cost us to run this program. Because in the, you know, there are places we can tighten up this page and we can fit in a line or a half a line pretty easily to say, you know, to, to provide, uh, school resource officers in every school in our county, it costs two million dollars.
And we are funded for this percentage currently?
We could say that, or not. The fact is, it costs two million dollars, that's what we need. Right? So, so relevant to moving forward is not what we got in the past, it's what do we need in the future. Right? So for each of those, we could attach a number. And then while there may be backup with more specificity, the more you have in one page right in front of you and you don't have to go leafing through other documentation, but it's at your fingertips, I think the, um, more likely it is to, to make it into legislation or where we need it. You know, when nobody has to go fishing through papers, but they can take this one sheet and say, oh, it's two million dollars.
Right.
Um, I'd encourage us to do that.
Okay. Dr. Rendell, can you get those figures and?
For?
Before our finalized version that we?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, for, for the safe schools allocation for that first bullet item, for sure. But, you know, basically the cost to place a school resource officer at every campus is two million dollars. Currently receive about one million dollars in funding. I mean, that, that's the simplest way to put that. Um, the, the second, um, area there, maintain funding for school facility hardening, that's a little bit, uh, it's going to be a little bit more difficult to.
Quantify?
To quantify because we could spend millions and millions and millions of dollars to harden the schools.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, what I can do is sit down with Mr. Teskey and Mr. Westenberg and kind of, you know, see basically what our spend is this year and what we would need to, you know, theoretically do what we're doing this year to add every school over the next, you know, few years.
Mm-hmm.
Because even if we were to get enough money to do it all at once, we probably can't physically do it all at once because we don't have enough contractors and everything to do it all at once. So that's, it's going to take a little more time. And then the, the third one there, the maintained mental health assistance allocation, um, we can put the dollars that we're receiving right now. And it says, you know, to at least maintain, so we can put that and then what a, what a, what a reasonable, um, increase would be.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, that was my, uh.
Yep.
Because it's what we're getting, but I know, um, Dr. Packard is also out looking for other money to supplement for the things that we want to do that this money doesn't provide enough for. You know, we've used this in a particular way, but in order, we've used this to, to hire staff, among other things, but in order to have a full complement of the work we'd like to see them doing requires additional dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And I do have another issue.
Go ahead.
If we're still, um, on this. I don't know if this is the time or place that we want to discuss that, but since this was put together, um, and it's slightly different from this, but the legislature also passed, um, I'm not sure of the exact wording, but the, whatever it is that allows for guardians in each schools, that the whole guardian bill. And I know in the past, when we were offered the option of doing that, we didn't, based on the advice of law enforcement. Um, that seems now, that issue seems to have elevated. Um, and I'm wondering if this is the time and place that we want to have a conversation about our position on that or do we rely, how we rely on law enforcement for that? Or if we want to take any statement or stand or have a conversation about that?
Any?
Is that a discussion for a closed session on safety?
Might be.
I would feel more comfortable in that setting. I mean, we can ask Ms. DeGressa to weigh in, but if, you know, we're going to talk about how we're going to respond, um, seems like a better place for that.
It does fall within the information that's typically discussed in a closed safety and security session. Um, just, I am aware of, excuse me, at least one other school board here in the state of Florida that did have that discussion publicly. But the vast majority have not talked about that publicly.
Um, just want to say that it needs to be short, concise. You have to have those numbers, but you also have to show how it's being underfunded. That's what I was asked lots of times, is, you know, well, but if you did this, then we, you'd have enough money. So we need to justify exactly why we don't have the money.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, with more, with the dollar amount added to increase total funding for safe school alloc- allocation to accommodate growth and expand coverage of safe schools officers. So I'll get, well, I'll add that wording there for the cost. Um, Mr. Teskey and Dr. Rendell will provide the numbers for the maintained funding for school hardening to give a, a ballpark on what we would need for next year, since we're looking at, really for the next year for the. And then, um, and then I will add the dollars to maintain the program for the mental health assistant allocation, correct?
Is it, are we looking to maintain the dollars or, and, and I'm wondering if this is a conversation that might include Dr. Packard, obviously not at this moment.
Right.
But, um, because I think she's the one who probably best knows what this is funding and what it's not and what, were we to ask for what it is we really need and what we want to do, that it might be reasonable to include her in that conversation as well.
Okay.
Uh, because, because I, yeah, again, I know she's masterful at looking for other resources and applying for grants. Um, but in getting this money, if mental health and the things that go, you know, and we talked a lot today about social emotional learning and trauma awareness and all of the other things that we're doing, that's part of this component that we would like to see fully funded, not as an afterthought to target hardening and school safety, but it is school safety. And I really don't want to give it as, as, as like an afterthought, well, if we can.
So we need to look at, I'm sorry, what we had over here, transportation funding, where we had, um, the state had provided three point nine, but it actually would cost us five point five. Um, so, you know, I think we need to add what the state does give us and then what our shortage or, what our shortage is and then what we think we need to run the program successfully for the next year.
Now, ma'am, Mrs. Rikai, may I make a comment?
Sure. Oh, thank you. Um, I think to Dr. Schiff's point, there could possibly be no end to some of it. Uh, when we talk about safe schools allocation, I'd like to add in here that safe schools money was never intended for school resource officers. It was intended for a number of different initiatives, including middle school, after-school, middle school programs, which kind of ties us back to mental health, you know. So there are a number of things that we're not including in this and I don't disagree with you. The mental health assistance allocation, I think if you said to Dr. Packard, um, what would you like to do to increase mental health services in this district? You could have a very extensive list, a very costly list. So I don't disagree. I, I like that we have this in here because we're at least recognizing, we're, I'm thankful that the legislator, legislature recognized that we needed specific funding for mental health assistance in our schools. Um, and, um, so perhaps something to say, not just maintain, but maintain and continue to increase, um, a- a- as far as that's concerned. Um, because I don't know right now to be able to say what the projected, you know, we talked about, I talked about guidance counselors today in elementary schools. We have thirteen elementary schools, guidance counselor makes seventy thousand dollars a year. I'm not sure exactly how much they make, but I'm sure they make quite a bit. And, um, you know, that would be an expensive budget, that would be expensive item to add to our budget, something that might be very important. But again, you know, we could add that in and say, you know, we'd like to do this. In the future, perhaps we say, these are, these are three projects we would like to do and these are the anticipated costs we would like to be funded for these projects perhaps, or something going forward.
Well, I think the thing is, we don't know the answer now.
Right.
Right? Because we haven't had that conversation. And I want to also caution us, the idea that when we lump everything on it, under a mental health umbrella, like it's about mental health, yes, that's an aspect. But, but I want to be sensitive to the degree that when we label it mental health. There are many people with mental health issues who are not school safety risks, right? So we're lumping it under that category because that's how it's been allocated here. But it's so much a broader conversation than that. And of course, we can't, at the moment, you know, have, have a wish list of everything we want to do. But I also trust Dr. Packard's expertise on being reasonable about what she sees as immediate priorities, where she's looking for external funding right now and how, if it were possible, um, some of that could be built into here so that we weren't scrambling for outside resources for things that we would consider priorities. So.
Okay.
Mrs. Zork, may I recommend an edit to the first paragraph? Um, enough, in the one, two, three, fourth line, it says to provide, adequately provide a safe school officer. Could we change that to school resource officer?
Okay. As part of.
I think that would make our intention clear about how we plan to use the funds.
Um, ma'am, Chair, is that the direct language that's in that act?
That's what I was.
Does the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act use the word, and that's why it is quoted, "safe school officer"? If it's the same language as what's in, um, the statute, then we might put in parentheses, "school resource", not change the language of the, the statute, but rather just add "school resource officer". I'm not sure, I don't know why.
I don't think we were quoting statute here. I think we were writing a legislative priority list. And as far as our priorities are concerned, we were asked this evening to remain committed to having school resource officers. That currently is what we have chosen to do as a school district, is to have school resource officers.
I agree with you. What I'm suggesting is, I don't know why there are quotation marks here. And so if the quotation marks are to refer specifically to the statute.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm speaking about the one, two, three, fourth line.
Safe school officer at each campus is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, but if you look on the first line, it is the same exact thing in quotations.
I understand that distinction, thank you.
So that's why I was asking. Um, that would just need to be, you know, looked into just a little bit long, a little further.
So, um, Dr. Rendell?
Yeah, so in the first line, um, definitely the safe school officer in quotations is a reference to the statute. Um, we, as has been pointed out, use school resource officers to meet that requirement. So, you know, we could easily change the wording in the fourth line to, you know, to state that we provide a school resource officer. So we're looking for the, you know, amount of funding that it would cost to provide a school resource officer. Because, um, a safe school officer directly could be a school employee in the guardian program.
That's right.
And it would not cost nearly as much as a school resource officer.
And we as a board have remained committed to having a school resource officer.
That's right.
In, on every campus. So I think it would be important to make that distinction and have it be known that that's, that is what we are looking for adequate funding to provide.
Okay, so.
Not a safe school officer.
So strike the word "safe" and insert the word "resource" between.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll wordsmith it, sure.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of the legislative platform with the additional details to the dollar amounts that we've discussed tonight will be added to it. And, um, so I need a, a vote for approval.
Move approval of the School District of Vinny River County, two thousand and nineteen legislative priorities with.
Have a motion pending on the table.
Okay.
So we.
But we, but we've amended it.
Right, you need to amend the, either withdraw the motion or amend the motion to account for this.
Mrs. Justice and Mrs. Rosario, can you please withdraw your, your motions? And then we'll.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion as well. And then I move to approve the School District of Vinny River County, two thousand and nineteen legislative priorities as discussed, amended this evening.
A second.
Okay. 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 All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five, zero. All right, so that concludes our action items. So, at this time, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to share some information with the members of our audience here and watching on TV. We have been without a chief financial officer or an assistant superintendent for business services for quite some time. And we actually went through the interview and selection process twice, and had two candidates that we offered and accepted, and then both withdrew for different reasons. And we've continued to search out a new assistant superintendent for business services and finance. But it's become quite apparent to me that we need to change the job description and kind of up the ante, so to speak. When I did reorganize the organizational chart several months ago, I did add a lot of responsibilities to that position. That assistant superintendent position took over human resources as well as finance and employee services. So, in two weeks, when we meet again, on the agenda in two weeks, is going to be a revised job description for deputy superintendent and chief financial officer. So, we've increased the job responsibilities for the position, and we will increase the pay associated with the position. The pay right now for the assistant superintendent position would be about $116,000. And, you know, searching the landscape, trying to find a capable individual who could take over that responsibility, we really want to try and find somebody with school district finance experience here in Florida. And to land those types of candidates, we have to increase the pay associated with that position. When we did reorganize the organizational chart, and we did not, when we eliminated the assistant superintendent for human resources and information technology, that was a cost savings to the district of about $15,000. So, I'm going to apply that difference in salary to this position, and the salary range will be somewhere between 125 and 135. But I just want, you know, before they, the, the public and our bargaining unit members see a, a new job description with an increase in pay, I want them to see the rationale behind it. You know, we really, it's a critical key position in our organization, we really need to make sure that we can find someone that has the qualities and experience that we need. And I'm searching the landscape and talking to other superintendents and other organizations around, most of the people that have the qualifications that we really desire for that position are already making more money than we were offering. And so, they would have to take pay cuts to come here and, and do this work. So, just want to give everybody a little bit of a, a background and rationale for why I'll be bringing that revised job description to the board for approval in two weeks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I ask a question on that?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it?
Go ahead.
When you mentioned that, you said you were going to, it, it would be a job description for deputy superintendent. We have assistant superintendents here rather than deputies. So, are you elevating this position to a deputy, and this would be the only deputy, and the rest are assistants, and can you speak to that?
Absolutely, it's a good question. We actually had this position in the past, deputy superintendent, chief financial officer, we actually had this position in the past. And through reorganization over the years and different things, maybe the recession, I'm not sure, that position was eliminated. But yes, that, that, this position would be the deputy, so to speak, and the others would still be assistant, so to speak.
So, so does that have hierarchical implications, right? Because i- is a deputy then hierarchically higher than the assistants, does that...
It wouldn't change the location of that job in the job, in the organizational chart, they would still oversee the same people they were overseeing before, which was in addition to what the assistant superintendent position was overseeing before.
Is, is there a reason for the change in language?
More responsibility.
So, the expansion of the job, has it more consistent with what would be considered a deputy superintendent than an assistant superintendent? And this position has more responsibility than the others, but is not different hierarchically on the organization chart? Do I understand that right?
It's pretty accurate.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sure we can have an in-depth conversation and discussion about that when he brings it up. So, those are good questions.
Just kind of fine.
No, those are good questions. All right. So, the next item we have is discussion, board discussion. So, what I would like to do is go ahead and take a 10-minute break at this time at 7:35 and come back at 7:45 and take a recess.
Mrs. Sork, I, I, we normally only take breaks within every two hours. Our meeting just started at six o'clock. If we could continue on through, with our discussion until the two-hour mark and take a break at then, I, I think that would be appropriate.
Well, I prefer not to interrupt discussion as we're in the middle of it. I prefer to go ahead and take that since we're only 15 minutes away. So, I'd like to recess this at 7:35, and we'll come back at 7:45. Order at 7:45? Okay, so, the next, we have discussion, and I had asked to put that, an add-on, and for discussion tonight, I would like to talk about the superintendent's employment agreement, and also the letter that we received from Dr. Rendell's attorney. And, so, if you, if you'll please pull the letter. Does everyone have a copy of that? It should be the first. Okay. So, March 20th, 2019, I, I received an email, and it was, "Dear Chairman Sork, please be advised that our office has been retained to represent Dr. Mark Rendell, Superintendent for the Indian River County School District. We have been retained to advise and assist Dr. Rendell concerning the terms and conditions of his employment with the district. It appears that the terms and conditions of his employment has been a hot topic of conversation by board members amongst themselves, as well as with third parties. During the representation of our client, of our client, it will be necessary for us to be included on any and all communications, whether those are directly to us, that will, that we are copied on, that concern or otherwise relate to Dr. Rendell's employment. We look forward to working with you on these issues. If you would like to discuss this matter further, please feel free to contact us. Sincerely, H.B. Stivers." So, what I would like to talk about is, with that letter, Mrs. DiAgresta had emailed us yesterday, I had asked for her to please send us a clarification on guidance on that. So, let me make sure that everyone has a copy. I'm going to take one. Actually, Mrs. Esplin, if you would keep the packet, because I'm going to be going through these. Do we have extra?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, I had asked Mrs. DiAgresta to please provide guidance to the school board regarding the letter received from Dr. Rendell's attorney. And, and Mrs. DiAgresta had stated that the letter from Dr. Rendell's attorney requests that he is copied with any communication to Dr. Rendell regarding his employment with the board. From my perspect, and I'm, Mrs. DiAgresta, are you, you're fine with me reading this right now, it's public rec, okay? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, it's a public record, yes. Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Okay. So, from my perspective, the school board requests that I communicate with Dr. Rendell regarding his employment contract. Now that I know he is represented by an attorney pursuant to the rules governing attorneys, I am only allowed to communicate through Dr. Rendell's attorney. Accordingly, I may not speak with Dr. Rendell about his employment contract or correspond with him about his employment contract. All communications from me to Dr. Rendell about his employment contract must be done through his attorney. In the event the school board wishes to discuss Dr. Rendell's employment contract pursuant to Florida sunshine law, you must do so in a public meeting. If Dr. Rendell wishes for his attorney to be present, the attorney may attend the public meeting. In the event the school board wishes to take some action regarding Dr. Rendell's employment contract, the more, the board must do it in a public meeting. And such action results in a letter or other written communications being provided to Dr. Rendell. The board may copy Dr. Rendell's attorney with the written communication, or you may rely upon Dr. Rendell to share the information with his attorney. If the school board requests that I send the written communications, I rec, I am required to send it to Dr. Rendell's attorney. Finally, while the closing sentence of the letter generally invites contact, invites contact if you have any questions, I do not suggest any board member call or contact Dr. Rendell's attorney. If the board wishes to discuss Dr. Rendell's employment contract, please do so in a public meeting. So, um, so I'd like to review Mrs. DiAgresta's recommendations to the board. Well, actually, I just reviewed her recommendations, but I have some recommendations I personally, as a board member, I feel that we need to do. My recommendation is that the board from here forward sees Mrs. DiAgresta in all email communication with the superintendent, and if possible, include Mrs. DiAgresta in all meetings with the superintendent, either by phone or in person. If Mrs. DiAgresta is not available, I then suggest you have Mrs. Esplin set in your meeting with the superintendent to take minutes for your record. I see this as an aggressive act on the board in the nature it was sent. I also think it is a sign of continuous poor communication with the board, because I met with the superintendent on Tuesday afternoon in our weekly meeting, and he did not mention the letter was coming on Wednesday. I would like to also give you another, or actually look in your backup. I need you to look at, let's see, where am I?
Mrs. Sork?
Mm-hmm.
Would there be an, an opportunity for other board members to be able to express their opinion regarding the letter?
At the end, after I get through all the items I was hoping to, to bring up, okay. So, um, so, Mrs. Mercado had sent me an email, let's see, was that, actually, yesterday? And she had advised as our risk management, that we, she is asking for the letter to be sent to our insurance SCRMP, so that, that we can notify them of possible litigation matters to our insurance agents in a timely manner, or any insurance coverage available may be denied. So, Mrs. Mercado, could you please come up and explain why you had made this recommendation that we submit the letter to the insurance provider?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary D. Mercado, Risk Manager. In any time that we receive a notice from attorney for possible action, we put the insurance carrier on notice so that they're prepared for it. Oftentimes, they'll reply with a list of tasks for us to do, such as to gather documents and things like that, to be preparing for our strategies for possible litigation. And I don't want to give away all of our strategies to the public, but it's a good, just preventative thing to do before litigation is filed, so that we can gather documents that we may need to defend our positions. It wouldn't, it would be the same whether it was for a casualty claim, a property claim, a workers' compensation claim, any other type of litigation. This isn't, just because it's an employment issue, it wouldn't be anything different.
Okay. So, I suggest that we heed her advice, and we, we report this to the insurance carrier just as a precaution. So, I need, I'll need guidance on that tonight, because that would be something that the, the chairman would have to send her, to have her send over. So, um, so I, we'll get back to that.
Mrs. Sork, before we move on, I have a question. Can you explain, can you explain why you feel that this letter is aggressive? I'm not really following that, I don't understand that.
Okay.
So, possibly you could explain how this is aggressive, I, I'm sorry.
I am going to finish my points, and then I will open it up after I make my points, and then we can go point by point to discuss anything that we need to discuss. So, moving on, third, to the fir-, third area that I would like us to review tonight, which is another area that we, we need to make sure that we're prepared and we address. So, yesterday, Dr. Rendell apparently had spoken to all the board members, and accordance to his contract, he has to give us written notice if he is seeking employment in other areas, or in other, outside the school district. So, we all received a copy of email, which was sent out last night by Dr. Rendell, March 25th, 2019, at 5:56. And it said, "Hello, board members, I have spoken with each of you verbally about this. In accordance with my contract requirements, I am notifying you in writing that I am applying for an employment position outside the jurisdiction of this school board." So, at this time, I would like for you to take a look at, I have the contract, if you could please pull the contract, and take a look at page nine. Page nine of the contract, and I would like to review section C2. Do you have the contract?
I have, I have the contract, I don't have what you have, which just looks, my page numbers are different.
The C2?
Yeah. But that's all right, I'll, I'll...
Okay.
That's all right with Dr. Schiff.
So...
Hold on a second.
There are page numbers for the agenda, and then there are page numbers for the contract. If you look directly beneath the text of the contract, there are additional page numbers that might be...
Oh, C2, I've got on page 10, not on page nine. Oh, I see, you're looking at the page nine here, not the page 10 here.
Right.
Got it. I got it.
Contract page nine of 21. So, it says on, on C, superintendent, superintendent's termination of contract, or of agreement, and then item number two. If the superintendent decides his employment as superintendent shall end, the superintendent shall provide at least 30 days in advance written notice to the board, and the superintendent shall only receive payment under his agreement for the balance of his base salary and benefits for the actual days he is performing duties as superintendent, and not for the remainder of the term of his agreement. So, my recommendation is, as a board body, we be cau-, we be cautious to be, to not overreact, but to be proactive in developing a plan going forward. We cannot risk sitting on the sidelines and waiting for the superintendent to transition into a new position outside the district. If we do, then we are setting ourselves to make rushed decisions that could be costly and set the district back even further. Tonight, I would like to publicly, publicly ask the superintendent, based on his recent actions outside of our control as a board, that he do what is in the best interest of the students, parents, employees, and the community, and tender his resignation with a finite date. My suggestion is the resignation give a final date with the district, with the district on or before the July 23rd board meeting. My, my desire is to have an amicable, smooth transition with Dr. Rendell's... My, my desire is to have an amicable, smooth transition with Dr. Rendell over the next few months with the goal of having a new superintendent in place by the start of the 2019, '20 school year or shortly thereafter. With this being said, my recommendation is to the board is that we begin to search for a new superintendent as soon as possible. I would like to call for a special discussion session set for April 2nd from 4:00 to 5:30 to review a timely timeline and review research on how boards in the past have historically went about a superintendent search. Typically, a superintendent search will take between four to six months. This optimal time to po, it's optimal time to post and begin a search based on the school district's contract calendar year. Most districts renew their superintendent and administrator's contracts in June and July. I believe if we are strategic now and be proactive, we can have a large pool of applicants to choose from if we get this position posted by April. Again, my desire is to work with the superintendent during the transition to make it smoothly successful for all. However, I am prepared as a board member to call for the termination of the superintendent's contract if he, in the event he wishes not to tender his resignation with his last date with the district no later than July 23rd board meeting. If we decide to terminate the contract with the superintendent without cause, then what that means is that we need to honor his contract. And I would like to go to the contract on page six, six of 21. Okay, six of 21, termination of the agreement. So there is termination of a con, of his contract with cause or without cause. So the worst-case scenario, if we get through July and he has not, um, submitted his resignation or found a position somewhere else, um, before that time, then if we did decide to terminate his agreement without cause, um, what that means if, if you'll go down to mid part of the, however, the superintendent is terminated and released from his agreement, and his agreement is thereby terminated pursuant to this provision, then the superintendent shall receive his terminal pay calculated as for any administrative employee pursuant to paragraph V1 dot 6 here of, plus his base salary only, without any other benefits, including monetary benefits, for a period of 20 weeks from the date of the school board vote to deter, to terminate pursuant to this provision. Now, if you look over on page 10 of the contract, 10A, I know this, this needs to be updated, but what that means if we get to July and, um, and we do end up terminating the superintendent based on, um, a vote without cause, um, what that means is base salary, and I know this is off, but I, I did ask for the numbers, is, on this contract, it says 160,000. So what you're looking at is 160,000, divide that by 52 weeks, times that, times 20, plus his termin, terminal pay, plus any vacation pay. So the payout at that time, no matter if it's two, two weeks from now, two months from now, or in July, it's all going to be the same in the payout of, um, terminating the contract unless he, he wishes to, um, submit his resignation ahead of time or finds a, where he finds a position somewhere else. So I just think that we need to be proactive and take advantage of the time we have now to plan properly, and, um, we must start the search now versus being reactive, and if he decides to take a position elsewhere, we're not less, left scrambling. I ask the board to agree to begin this necessary and overdue process. So now I will open the, this up for conversation. Mrs. Justice had a question, then Mrs. Rosario. Mrs. Justice.
Yes, Mrs. Zork.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much. When we go back to the original letter that we received on March 20th, can you please explain to me how you find that to be aggressive? I do not.
I think that when I had asked Dr. Rendell about this, he had said that the, the board was talking about this, a board member kept bringing it up, and, um, so, and also, apparently, there was a third party which was outside, uh, it was the newspaper that had given him information, and based on the, the information, what I have gathered, that he feels that it's going to be consensus of the board not to re, or not to renew his contract. I feel that he has, um, I think what we've always heard in the past, he, he tends to have bullying tactics, and I think this is a bullying tactic to force us into renewing his con, or extending his contract when, um, we've not yet had that discussion. So, Mrs. Rosario.
No, I'd like to, I'd like to answer back, I'm sorry, because I'd like to share now why I did not find it aggressive, um, in business and many different, people retaining attorneys all the time. Dr. Rendell's contract has in fact been a hot topic, it's been discussed many different times, uh, with board members during discussion sessions or workshops or board meetings. Um, I saw this as a positive sign, actually. I saw that he had retained counsel to move into contract negotiations with us, that he was still interested in participating as superintendent, acting as superintendent for this school district. He doesn't have representation within the school district, Suzanne represents the school district, the school board. So I did not in any way find this to be aggressive. Um, I got the letter, I said, "Oh, we retained a law firm to work with him through contract negotiations." So to be clear, uh, again, I did not find this to be aggressive in any fashion.
Dr. Rendell, how many times have you sent us a letter in, in the past since you've been here to help with contract negotiations with your attorney? How many times have, since I've been on the board, it's not been any? So this is the first time that I've received a letter from an attorney, and it does not state that what Mrs. Justice is saying. You know, and we looked at the timeline, board members, and the timeline says in January, typically you review, um, the superintendent's performance with the superintendent, and you are a new board, so bringing it up for discussion and trying to understand what's in his contract and what the timeline is, I just don't think it warranted the reaction that the superintendent gave to this. So, you know, if he would have come to us and talked to us, but that was not the case. We got the letter, now we have the letter, and I feel like he's taken it to a step that now we must, along with this letter, we also got the email yesterday that says he's looking for an employment elsewhere.
Mrs. Zork, we've indulged, we've indulged you quite a bit this evening. I have another question I'd like to ask.
No, I, I'm.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I was speaking.
I am speaking.
Mrs. Zork, we have indulged you for quite some time since the beginning of coming back.
All right. Can we take a three-minute recess, and we'll come back when, um, you can honor the rules of the board? Thank you.
Mrs. DiAgresta, can I speak to you?
Are we in recess right now? I don't understand what we're.
Three minutes.
Okay.
Can I speak with?
For 8:11, um, board members, if we could, please honor one, one board member speaking at a time, and I would like you to, um, please request that, and so we're not interrupting and trying to talk over each other. So as I was saying, um, couple the email that we had received from Dr. Rendell today about him searching out employment elsewhere, um, it goes back to the fact that, you know, he has intentions that weren't necessarily stated in here. Um, it's, he is searching for an employment outside the district, and if he does find employment outside the district, we will left with a 30-day notice of trying to search for a superintendent. So, um.
Mrs. Zork, you can't see me because I'm behind you, you have your back to me, but when you, I'd like to speak when you have a moment.
Okay, Mrs. Rosario, you had?
I do. I read, um, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I read Dr. Rendell's, um, contract several times, um, though I am not legal counsel, interpretation may be, um, uh, may not be exact, um, and so I, I fall to the advice of our legal counsel. But I'm probably going to go out on a ledge and assume that I might be the board member that might be bringing this up often. In fact, I brought it up at our last discussion session just so that we could have an evaluation timeline. Everyone seems to have an evaluation timeline, it's appropriate and professional for us to have that. And so, but I just want to go on the record and say that this board member has not now nor ever had any conversation with any reporter from any newspaper outlet. So I just want to quell that, that assumption right there. That aside, I also had a meeting with Dr. Rendell in our weekly meeting on Tuesday of this week. Yeah, I think it was Tuesday, no?
Yesterday, it was Monday.
No, la, last week, when, before we got the letter.
It was Wednesday.
It was Wednesday?
Yeah.
Um, anyway, it was prior to receiving the email, and I also was not told about a heads-up that this letter might be coming. But nonetheless, um, the contract does not make mention, um, that we would be in violation of his contract, and this is for Mrs. DiAgresta. I actually have maybe two-part, um, comment if you don't mind, Mrs., um, Madam Chair. Mrs. DiAgresta, the contract doesn't make mention anywhere in here, uh, board action to begin a vetting process for new superintendent at any point in time. Am I to understand that beginning to vet a new superintendent for the possibility, should that be needed, um, does that in any way violate the contract, his work contract?
Um, no ma'am, it does not.
Thank you. So what, what I'm understanding, um, Mrs. Zork, that you are requesting of us is to, um, be prepared by putting our district first, our needs first. We would absolutely, if we were to absolutely, um, if Dr. Rendell were to submit, um, a resignation, if he were to go in an interview tomorrow, get the job, then we would be without a superintendent, essentially, because it does not take 30 days for us to vet, interview, and hire a new superintendent. At a critical time in our process, end of year, um, our superint, our supervisors would need their evaluations, hiring for our new school year, um, getting our budget up and running, which we have no CFO to, um, handle that, we would actually be at an extreme disadvantage, to say the least. I can't even envision the direction of this school district without a superint, if we were to have a 30-day notice for the superintendent. I mean, I can't even fathom to begin, but so long as it does not violate his contract, I actually think that we would be, uh, doing the right thing if we were to begin vetting. Vetting possible candidates does not violate his contract. We would not, um, I, I, I want to also mention the possibility for action or litigation with the recommendation from Mary D. Mercado. Um, I thank you for your suggestion to do that, I think that we should move forward with that, just in case, who knows? I have trust issues with conversations with, um, Dr. Rendell, so I can understand the other recommendation that Mrs. Zork has with regard to, um, having someone present in our meetings, or, you know, something of the sort, CC Mrs. DiAgresta on emails, um, and so on, and only because there now is some personal legal counsel involved. When I saw this letter, I couldn't understand why. I asked Dr. Rendell, um, why he felt the need. He told me that, um, it's his right, so I respect his right. Um, I asked Dr. Rendell if he hired personal, a personal, um, employment, uh, lawyer in the previous years, last year, he said no. I asked him if he did it the year before, he said no. The only time he's ever hired legal counsel was when he, um, was first hired for his first contract, is, that's what he told me. So I find it pretty strange, I guess. Um, I'm told that superintendents do this often, I've never heard of that, I've been asking around. Um, it is within our right as his supervisors to discuss his contract, um, at length. We can discuss it until we're blue in the face, we can discuss it at every discussion session, that's our right, um, especially as new school board members, three of us, fairly new. If there is anything that we don't understand about the contract, the language, um, how we're going to have, uh, mid-year, a mid-year review or discussion about where we are going, where we're headed, um, there is not, there isn't a supervisor around who wouldn't want to understand their employee's contract. Everybody would. And so to have the discussion on the letter quoted with hot topic of conversation by board members is frankly an insult. That's my job, that's our job, to discuss, to work around the terms and conditions of his employment. And actually, I think we would be doing, if we weren't having this discussion, I don't think we would be doing our job. So, I accept your recommendations, um, if this is something that we move forward with consensus, um, I accept it. I find that this is a very, this puts us at a very big disadvantage right now because our legal counsel is now not able to discuss his contract, anything regarding his contract with him, um, only with us, and that's fine, um, but it, it changes the, um, the relationship completely, so I, I accept the recommendations.
Okay. Dr. Shitt?
Well, I hadn't volunteered to speak, but I guess I will. Uh, my thoughts are not quite in order, because, uh, because of Sunshine Laws, this is the first time we've had this conversation. And I am not one to have knee-jerk reactions, I am not one to make rash decisions, I think that's obvious in my conduct both before and since being elected. I am, um, I'm a bit tongue-tied, actually. I am, um, I echo what Ms. Rosario said about, um, I have not discussed this before with, with a board member, with anyone outside of the board, with the press, I have not had that conversation, nor would I, and I have actually discussed that with the superintendent, um, and affirmed that that's just not something I would do. Um, so that we are having this conversation for the first time here and now, leaves me with my thoughts not quite in order, and my history as somebody who deals with conflict in very, very. And my history as somebody who deals with conflict in very, very different ways than this setting allows us to do. This setting forces us to be adversarial, which are, which is, I think, not the most productive way to have these conversations. So, um, it, and it's not my nature to have conversations in this way that presumes, that presumes zero sum. There's a win-lose. There's two sides. We, uh, eh. So that said, um, I did ask the superintendent about the, um, just again, to be transparent, I did ask the superintendent about the legal counsel letter, to which he responded, this was common practice among superintendents, that he had spoken to, that this had happened before, that he had not done so in the past, simply because of, it had not been the way that this board interacted in its relationship with him, and he now felt like that would be an appropriate thing to do. Whether that was, that was meant to be adversarial or that was meant to, I, I am not going to presuppose superintendent's intentions. I'm not going to presuppose anybody's intentions, and I've been, others have tried to pull me into that trap before, and I'm not going there. I am concerned, I will say, I am concerned about the possibility of being left without a superintendent. That frankly concerns me more than getting legal counsel. So the getting legal counsel, I could have lived with and had a conversation about. The idea that we could be left without a superintendent, without a CFO, as we head into budget season, as we are a new board, is, is mind-boggling, frankly. Having to have this conversation in this format makes it a kind of, makes it a different conversation than it would be if we could have a rational conversation as a group of people sitting and, and talking together about what's working and what's not, and how do we move forward. Sunshine laws prohibit us from doing that. I am, um, I don't disagree with, with the idea of being prepared. I did not necessarily see getting counsel as an aggressive act, so I, so I will say that. I didn't necessarily see it that way. I can see where you saw it that way. I can see where Mrs. Justice did not see it that way. My blessing and my curse is I can always see both sides of everything. So, um, I, I am, um, the idea of being left without a superintendent frankly terrifies me at this moment, because I'm not prepared to run a school district a, as an individual. So I'm not quite prepared at this moment. I want to hear more conversation from my fellow board members about moving forward. I want to, um, to the degree we're able, have a rational conversation about this, moving forward. And I feel like we're not in that place right now.
Okay. So when I said I would like to call for a special discussion session set on April 2nd from four to, um...
Well, and that's also the first I heard of April 2nd, so for...
Right, and that's, that is next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, which conveniently is free, thank God.
Okay.
Thank goodness, sorry.
So, um...
I'm available.
Four to 5:30 or, or 6:00, because we had talked about, you know, our optimal time for the board to meet on Tuesdays from, from 3:00 to 6:00 or 4:00 to 6:00. So, um, so that would be a time that we would, I would bring back to the board what a timeline would look like if we was to choose to start the, the superintendent's search. And I will have that historic information, that I've been going back and looking at the videos over the past couple of days and finding the research when Dr. Rendell was hired, and then whenever, um, in the past, how we've, what the timelines looked like and how long it takes and the processes that need to take place. So, um, I would have that available to discuss on April 2nd.
Mrs. Zork?
Yes.
If I can have a minute?
Yes.
Yeah, this all kind of is hitting me like a ton of bricks. I must be the one that's not paying attention to anybody else's conversations, because, you know, I'm kind of been thrown off by all this. When I read the article, um, not only was I concerned that somebody is either speaking to the press, but that an article would be printed that said that some board members were speaking to each other or to the press, and yet weren't quoted in the article. And I felt like that should have been done. If somebody's going to speak to the press, that should be a quote. So it wasn't me, and I was kind of surprised to read all that. Then I was surprised to get the letter and, you know, surprised in my conversation with the superintendent yesterday when he told me about this. But I'm not surprised that he feels like he has to be defended. Being a new board member, you're trying to fi-figure this all out, and I get that. And I came to this board with no agenda, with wanting to work hard for our students and our teachers and our community. And I want to do the right thing, and I want to be respectful of the man that's sitting in this seat that's a very difficult seat to sit in. Still learning his practices and everything else. You mentioned bullying tactic. I don't know what you're referring to, so that's not something I have heard about from somebody or been informed about, so that's something that, you know, maybe people can give me specifics. I don't know. But I did ask about Robert's rules. That's why I asked the attorney to speak with me, because I said, you know, where are we right now? And she said, we're in discussion. And so we're supposed to all have the ability to speak. And I will say that, um, Mrs. Justice, if you want to watch the tape back, you can watch. She was speaking, and then you interrupted her and hit your gavel, and it got very heated, which, you know, I'm hoping that we can have a discussion that's professional. And, and I respect your comments that you made about, I'm not prepared either for this, because, you know, this is pretty heavy stuff. We're looking at changing a lot. When you change the person at the top, you change a lot in the school district. And yes, you're worried about not having somebody. I've been in a district where we didn't have a superintendent. We had an acting superintendent, which was my supervisor got to put, put up to acting superintendent. So it wouldn't be our job. We're not the job. We don't run the school district. It is somebody else's job that we would, we would probably tap somebody, maybe over there. I don't, I'm not sure. But it, it's doable to run a district without a superintendent. So I'm not, I don't want to make a rash decision. I don't. I also want to make sure that we're making the right decision and doing the right thing, and vetting all things, and not saying without data. I mean, I, I use data for every decision I make. I want to look at all the facts, all the data. I don't want to go off of somebody's opinion, or somebody said something or doesn't like something that happened to them. I get that. If there are facts and there are things that have happened that are legitimate reasons why we need to remove the superintendent, then we'll remove the superintendent. But I need to see the facts and I need to see the rationale behind it. And so to, to just all of a sudden say, well, because he got an attorney, then he broke his contract. I read the contract. He didn't break the contract.
I didn't.
So...
She didn't say that.
I never said that.
Okay. So, but, but you're jumping to this because of that action. That's what I'm saying. You said that because he got an attorney, you're going to ask for his resignation, because it's a hot topic amongst ourselves and with others. I, I get now that we're, we're now in a position where we're not speaking to our superintendent on the same professional courtesy that we had last week or the week before now, because of all this. And so that concerns me as well. You're asking us if I have a private conversation with the superintendent, that I need to make sure that I'm on speakerphone with the attorney. I get, she's our attorney. I get that. I totally get that. If we were contracting with someone, then I would definitely have conversation with attorney the whole time. And now that he's retained an attorney, I understand why you're saying that we have to have an attorney. I don't know if every con-conversation I have with him needs to be that way. I think it's about specifics about this, yes. I, I absolutely think I should have Suzanne on the phone as well. But I haven't had those conversations with him, other than I received your letter. And then at the end of my conversation yesterday, where I brought up, I don't know, 25 different bullet points with him about things that, that were concerning me in the district, things I even mentioned tonight that I went to Tallahassee to talk about, that he was very good about saying, yes, I'll get back to you on that. Yes, we can bring that up for a workshop. So I would hate for me not to be able to have that conversation with him and be able to keep moving in the business of the school board and the school district, because we're now at an impasse, I feel like. So I'm a little concerned about that.
I just, and my point of that was to be cautious and to protect yourself as a board member. And then also in protecting yourself, you're protecting the district. If for some reason he was to choose to come back and, for whatever reason. Because, you know, my concern is, not only do we receive this letter that he recent, that he retained an attorney, which was never done in the past, he never talked to me as a board member, explaining his reasonings. And then, within a few days of that, he also sent us, sends us an email that he's applying for positions outside the jurisdiction. That tells me that, when I look at the contract, we could possibly have 30 days that we have to put a superintendent in place. And so my, um, my goal of having a discussion session would be to review a realistic timeline of everything that would have to take place, because if he finds a position in, um, let's say, June, most school districts operate on a June-July contract cycle. So just like we've run into that problem with finding a CFO, all the qualified CFO, or many of the qualified CFOs right now are in a contract up until June. So that means if, if he finds a position in June, and it just really limits our pool that we can pull from, because those superintendents who might have applied for the position now are in a year contract. And so, um, our pool will be limited to the ones that are either retired or the ones that didn't actually get a contract that year. So, um, I just, I just want to have a conversation of the timeline. And when I looked back, um, Chairman, um, I think it was Chairman Johnson and then Mr. McCain, they had, they had all, um, I believe I'm, I'm right, but they, they had discussed the timeline. So it, it was the chair that helped prepare the timeline with staff to bring it to the board. So that is just, um, by having this discussion on April 2nd, what that would do is just really lay out what type of, um, work that we would have ahead of us. And I really think if, if it's something after that discussion that, that the board would like to look at, that we would have to start, we'd have to get started. But that was the point of having the, the discussion session then.
Thank you, Mrs. Zork. This evening, my fellow board members have referenced a news article, news magazine article. Uh, the author of the article is, is currently sitting in our school board chambers in the Teacher Education Center. In the article, it was stated, I believe, and I, I don't have it memorized, but I'll summarize to a certain degree, that, um, two board members, possibly three board members, had stated to the reporter that they in fact had no intention of renewing the superintendent's contract. Um, and then also, one board member said he's not going to make it. Three board members, so far this evening, have said they did not speak to the reporter and share that information. I was on the Bob Seuss radio show this morning discussing this very issue, and I did share that I in fact was not one of the people that spoke to the reporter. So we seem to be in this little bit of a problem, because we have four or five people sitting here saying that they in fact did not speak to the reporter, and they, and did not say those things. Um, and the reporter, if he's telling the truth, was very kind to these school board members by not mentioning their names, withholding their names as they asked. But I would imagine that leaves him in the position, in the 32963 news magazine, the position of having printed something that was completely unfactual, uh, no, no truth to it at all. And, uh, so when I think about being the superintendent of schools of Indian River County, and I think about reading in this weekly news magazine, or perhaps having my child pick up the weekly news magazine, or my wife pick up the weekly news magazine and see this written, how horrible. If any other staff member, if the superintendent treated his staff in this way, if the staff members treated the principals or the teachers in this way to discuss the employment contract of their, um, of their employee without having spoken directly with that employee first, we would be horrified. So, um, I'm kind of stuck. I, I don't know what's true at this point. Uh, 32963 has done a number of, of different articles that I have not believed have been factual, and, and I have shared that. So I wanted to give my board members the benefit of the doubt, that they in fact did not, uh, take that step and speak to a reporter and share that confidential information or that type of information, even using the media as a, a way to skirt sunshine law, using the media as a conduit. So definitely concerning in a number of different ways. So, so I don't know if Mrs. Zork would like to speak to whether or not she did in fact speak with the reporter. Uh, she has the opportunity when I'm done speaking to, to mention that, if she'd like to talk about it. I, I can assure you that we will have many challenges in finding a new superintendent, especially if they watch this meeting. I have always said that I am proud to be a member of this school board. But, uh, and I definitely encourage open and honest communication about the superintendent's evaluation, about how we move forward. But today, we sat in a workshop from 12:00 to 4:00, where we had a number of presentations from staff and community partners, and many of the initiatives, Panorama, switching our ERP program to focus, working with the Learning Alliance and the targeted interventions with third-grade interventionists and Moonshot Academies and deep-dive schools that Dr. Rendell and his team worked on to create. I've been inundated with emails today from the community, supporting Dr. Rendell in so many different ways about the improvements that he's made in our school district. So, um, you know, I think as elected officials, we are not only respons, we are, we, we have to be responsive to our constituents as well. Um, I am aware that my fellow board members have received these emails. And so I will not support any of the recommendations made by the chairwoman this evening. Um, I think that the, um, the, that some of the, uh, I think it's been made very clear that if Dr. Rendell's intentions were to retain counsel to protect himself, then he was right. I, I didn't see it in that way, because I hadn't heard this type of conversation or these types of thoughts ever shared before. But I will not be supporting any of the recommendations.
Okay. Which, honestly, that doesn't surprise me, so...
Mrs. Zork? I think I have, I don't have my calendar in front of me, because I didn't know you were going to give us a date and a time, but I think I have a conflict, because I had already committed to one of our partners that I'm working with as part of a task force to help our school district. And they worked around me to make that time, and I told them it was an off-week from school board meeting, so it probably would work. But I, I don't know, because I don't have my book in front of me, so I don't know exactly if that time is, is where I set, but I thought it was.
Okay. So...
Point of clarification, if, if, if we were to have that meeting, if you were avail, if all of that, it has to be publicly noticed. Are we within the window of public not, publicly notice?
Mrs. Di Agosta, 72 hours?
Yes, if, if the board wishes to schedule a special meeting, you can do it upon 48 hours, a posting of the agenda. So it's, it's a shortened period of time for a special meeting, for regular meetings, and your, your board policy says for workshops, it's a seven-day notice and agenda posting. But for special meetings, it's 38 hours.
Mrs. Rosario?
Mrs. Di Agosta, what exactly would be the quorum to have a meeting such as this? This would only be a discussion. Do we need quorum for a discussion?
We're not voting.
Or, doesn't matter?
Go ahead, Mrs. Di Agosta.
Thank you. If, if more than one school board member will be meeting to discuss an issue, a, a, a topic for the... Thank you. Um, if, if more than one school board member will be meeting to discuss an issue, a, a, a topic for the board, um, it must be noticed as a public meeting. So, if any two of you wish to sit and discuss this topic, we would still need to notice the meeting and have minutes and, um, public notice and public access to the meeting. So, yes, two, if two of you wish to sit in a room, we still have to follow the same process to notice it and have minutes. If three of you, it's, it's the same process. If it's more than one, we've got to follow the process.
So, Madam Chair, if I might suggest, maybe we can, um, come up with, um, maybe a choice, three choices, you know, our best, um, pending Mrs. Barron Board, looking at our schedule.
My calendar's on my desk.
Okay, perfect.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing, uh, I, Madam Chair, if I may.
Okay, if you'll just, no, just, 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 um, take, at this point, we'll take thirty, thirty seconds?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Or, no, one minute, one minute.
Run, Dory, run.
Okay, I have two of my three calendars with me.
Okay, so we are, um, we're back.
Okay. I have two of my three calendars with me. I'm quite sure the other one, which is my school calendar. Um, but my other two, I have that time schedule open.
Can I finish my last?
I'm sorry, Clip, you have that time available?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Can I finish my last thought before she went? What I was, what I was, um, wanting to say is, um, this possible move, um, was not initiated from any board member. However, meaning the, the, um, the retention of a lawyer and, um, the po- the possibility of, well, he's definitely, Dr. Rendell is definitely looking to interview outside of the jurisdiction. Um, so, his intention is, um, to retain employment outside of the jurisdiction at some point. And, um, he has that right, you know? But from now until whenever that will happen, um, work still goes on. Work still continues. You know, the, the, the work of the district, um, um, still occurs. Our relationship with the superintendent is still going to be the same relationship, though possibly, you know, um, um, slightly different maybe, but we're still gonna meet with him, we're still going to, um, evaluate his performance, we're still going to expect the same things. Things like that of that nature does not change. It just doesn't. Even if we were to have this conversation in June, or July, whatever the deadline is, that we agreed, if in July, we chose, um, not to renew his contract the following year, um, he essentially would still work for a whole year as superintendent here until he seeks employment elsewhere. So, having this happen possibly in July or now is still the same thing. You know, it, it doesn't change the fact that we're still expecting the work to get done. So, I just wanted to say that, because there, the, the, the agenda, um, that some may think uh, is, is, is like a personal vendetta or something, um, I, some may think that. Um, I would take offense to that, because that is not, um, the case. But I do understand the possibility of us, um, getting that thirty-day notice, and I can see the urgency for that. So, to begin vetting my biggest concern, again, I know I'm reiterating, my biggest concern was, will we violate his work con- contract? And so long as we are not, it doesn't hurt anybody to begin that vetting process.
Okay, yeah, I, I can say, I, I was very, very shocked, and I was at a loss of words whenever I opened that email, because, um, Dr. Rendell had just passed me in the hallway, and, you know, like I said, there was just no discussion at all that that was coming. And then, whenever I had talked to him, I just, I was just very disappointed that he did not come and at least share that with, with me that, or give his reasons to me ahead of time, why he did that. And, um, and then, secondly, um, you know, if, I just look at the fact that he co- he's, he's seeking employment elsewhere. So.
Madam Chair, if I might, I'd like to correct that statement.
Okay.
Um, we had a meeting scheduled for yesterday at noon that you canceled at ten AM. I was planning on telling you about that in the meeting.
About what?
The, um, possibility of seeking employment elsewhere.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying that I was shocked whenever I received the, the email and letter from your attorney. Um, I was very disappointed in that, and you had not even talked to me about that or shared your concerns, because I felt like up to that point, we had been having some very frank conversations. Um, but yes, yesterday, after, um, after the meeting with the, the auditor, you did pull me aside and, and let me know that this email was coming, this one here that states, um, that you're seeking employment elsewhere. So, yes, you're right. You, you did, um, give me that heads up, that this email was coming out. But, um, but still the fact, the email came out and you're applying elsewhere, and when I read your contract, we have, you have to give us thirty days before you leave, so, and as we saw in the past, when we had the CFO and, and the director and the senior accountant leave, that thirty days might be five days that he, you know, the actual work here, because, um, vacation time. So, it really, I just ask that, you know, I, I want to work with the superintendent. You know, I say July twenty-third, because I would like to see him work, unless we come up with someone in that timeframe, I would like to see him at our graduations and, um, see it through until the end of the school year. But, um, I, we just have to get proactive on this and, and searching.
Mrs. Ork? Mm-hmm. Thank you. Um, I think perhaps some of the concern was, again, um, a, a news magazine had reported that three board members said they had no intention of renewing Dr. Rendell's contract. Um, I, I, he is a father and a husband, I have a, a husband, and we have four children. And I can imagine for my husband to read somewhere that he would no longer be employed at some point, um, would be very concerning to him, as he is the primary breadwinner of our household, and he takes enormous responsibility and, um, great pride in providing for his family. Um, so, the idea that the superintendent would somehow let us know, as his contract states, that he would be looking for employment elsewhere, I think, may stem from a feeling of not feeling very valued or appreciated, having read that article. Um, I'd like to propose something different. Um, perhaps, uh, we should direct the chair to enter negotiations with the superintendent to renew his contract through twenty-twenty-one. Um, superintendents in general, uh, if they are allowed to enter the last year of their contract, it's kind of a message that they will be non-renewed. Um, that's something that the previous board has discussed quite a bit. Um, and so, um, in talking about Dr. Rendell's contract, perhaps we need to give him some job security. As I said, um, we heard from many community partners today, um, and parents and coaches and teachers in support of Dr. Rendell, I, I would imagine they had read the weekly news magazine article, um, and they were concerned that perhaps somehow his contract, um, would come to an end. Um, Barbara Hammond of the Learning Alliance spoke today about research regarding organizations and organizational change, and how much time it takes to really see true growth and change within organization. Um, and so, renewing through the twenty-twenty-one contract would bring us to about seven years in the superintendent's contract, um, with his time with the school district, and allow us to, really, ten years would be a full cycle of students, but really allow us to see um, if the areas where he has implemented change have made a difference. Um, I have stated before, we are not where we would like to be as far as student achievement is concerned, but student achievement across the district has steadily increased over the past three years during Dr. Rendell's time. It would be a shame to let such a valued employee, who's made such a difference with student achievement and culture and climate and technology and a number of different areas, um, at community partnerships, um, the formulation of a strategic plan, I could continue. Um, in fact, Dr. Rendell shared a nine-page, uh, letter with the reporter from 32963 um, regarding some of those, uh, achievements. So, um, I'd like to put that out there. Is there any consensus to, uh, allow the chair to enter into negotiations with the superintendent's attorneys, uh, to look into renewing his contract through twenty-twenty-one and giving him the job security that he, uh, may seek?
And then, I want to also.
Okay.
Absolutely not. The superintendent is seeking employment elsewhere. It has nothing to do with job security here. If he's seeking elsewhere, I mean, he doesn't, he's seeking elsewhere. But, Dr. Uh, Dr. Rendell, I have a question for you. Please, if I may. When did you, um, retain your lawyer? Do you remember the date in which you first contacted them?
I don't know the specific date. I'd have to go look at past emails to figure that out.
Was it?
Recently.
Several weeks ago, two weeks ago, before the email?
I would say within the last several weeks.
Several weeks. So, certainly before you received the email from Frederico Martinez?
I was in contact with them before then.
Okay. So, Mrs. Justice, this has nothing to do with that email, I mean, that news article. Mister, Dr. Rendell contacted his lawyers long before he received long, a day, two days?
I wouldn't say long before, uh, that would not be accurate.
Okay, before.
Mm-hmm.
Before. A day before, five minutes before, whenever it was, it was before you received the email from Frederico Martinez.
Yeah, the, the impetus was the fact that my contract, my employment status
Right.
was on, on the agenda for discussion for months. I think it's three months now that it's been on the agenda for discussion at either a discussion session or a business meeting agenda tonight.
Right.
So,
But wouldn't.
Most people who, when they see their employment status being put on an agenda for discussion, at some point are probably gonna say, maybe I need to get some legal counsel to protect my interests.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the impetus.
Yeah, I, I might very respectfully disagree.
Mrs. Rosario, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When you brought it up, I recall my memory, I believe that you brought it up the first time under our discussion session as just reviewing details of that employment agreement. And then, the second time that you brought it up, you wanted to review the timeline.
The first time that I brought it up for discussion was to, um, discuss with you all that his evaluation should reflect the strategic plan.
Exactly.
Um, and then, the second time that I brought it up was to specifically discuss the timeline of, of the evaluation, that we did not have one.
Exactly.
Correct.
Um, so, as far as we, we talked, you and I, um, we are in our right to discuss your employment contract.
Absolutely. And there was also another board member that had it on discussion and specifically asked for the renewal language, the termination language.
Right. But I, I.
The discussion session.
But I would respectfully disagree with you, because the common person, when their contracts are mentioned, they don't go seeking employment, uh, counsel. Um, that, they don't do that. And, and I might also suggest, you have a contract. You have a contract. What I don't understand, and we've talked about this, it's not, my fellow board members don't know that, what we talked about, but, you, if you work by a contract, this is the legal binding word that, that we ought to follow. Having an attorney request all of the emails that we may possibly send to one another with regard to your employment, um, would, essentially, the purpose of that would be, number one, to see if any board members are violating sunshine. Two, to get a heads up to see who's saying what about you.
Did somebody ask for, I, I'm not aware of anybody asking for emails, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
During the representation.
Your, your lawyer is asking for copies of any emails regarding your employment contract.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Roy, I'm reading that as any future contract negotiations or things would be something that the lawyers would be CC'd on, because they are his counsel now. I, I'm not reading that as any type of public records request into anything.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's just.
Mrs., Mrs. Justice, with all due respect, I don't think you recalled. Um, Dr. Rendell, the letter here, um, says, um, we have been retained, Dr. Rendell concerning, okay, during the representation of our client, it will be necessary for us to be included on any and all communications, whether those are directly to us or that we are copied on, that concern or otherwise relate to Dr. Rendell's employment.
Correct.
So, I am correct in saying, any possible emails or anything of the like regarding your employment should be CC'd or sent in any way to your employ- to your, um, lawyers. So, what could possibly be sent to them might be, you know, um, board members violating sunshine, possibly, if they're talking with each other about your contract. Or, if we're sending Mrs. DiAgresta an email, that would be, you know, a, a, a CC to your lawyers, or whatever it might be. Um, if we're sending an email to whomever in the community regarding your, any, any language regarding your employment or your contract should be CC'd to your lawyer. But that wouldn't, uh, it, it would be in vain so long as we don't violate your contract and so long as we don't violate sunshine. It's just, um, it's just informing them of what we're talking about, but we could talk to you about that. We could talk openly in board meetings about that. So, I just, it just seems like there's an ulterior motive for it. I respect, I told you, I respect your, you know, your right to hire an attorney. I don't agree with it, but I respect your right to do that. Um, it just, it doesn't seem, um, I, I, I just, I just don't get it, but that's okay.
Dr. Shipp, you wanted to reply to the request from Mrs. Justice?
Well, no, uh, I, I wanted to have an independent comment.
Hmm.
Two things. Uh, one, I'm increasingly uncomfortable having a conversation in the third person about a person who's sitting here. So, with your permission, I'd like to invite him to weigh in. And secondly, um, in this conversation, which is necessarily uncomfortable, I'm, I, I'm not sorry we're having the conversation, because it's been hovering below the surface for a really long time. So, I'm not sorry that we're bringing it up, because once we brought it up, we bring it to air, we get to have a frank conversation about it, and I'm not sorry that we get to do that. I'm a, I'm a little sorry it came up in this way, um, but I'm not sorry it came up, because I think it's an opportunity for us, moving forward, to have some really frank conversations.
Can I ask, you're sorry it come up in this way?
I would have, I think I would have preferred it come up in a discussion, rather than in a business meeting. But that's neither here nor there. It came up the way it came up, so it doesn't really matter what my preference is, right? That's irrelevant. We're having the conversation now. So, that we're having the conversation. So that we're having the conversation. I have learned over time, you know, we are, we are in a culture that is distinctly conflict diverse. And I have learned to walk forward into culture, into conflict, and I don't mind doing that. And so I think it's an opportunity actually for us to have difficult conversations, and I don't mind doing that. I am, I am not ready to either move forward terminating the contract nor am I ready to extend it. I'm not ready to have either of those conversations right now. I'm ready to have a conversation about where are we? And about how do we move forward with this in a way that ideally, though perhaps unlikely, leaves us feeling that, that we've made a careful, considered, and reasonable decision, whatever that decision is. I'm nowhere near making that decision right now. But I'm, but I, but I don't mind that we're having the conversation and I think it's appropriate to bring it up because I think, to the degree it keeps coming up in the paper, to the degree it keeps coming up in emails, to the degree it keeps, it keeps coming up, we have to address it head-on as a board. So I don't mind doing that. And I don't mind, you know, having a conversation next Tuesday. I would hope, I would actually ask that, that we plan for more than an hour and a half if we can, because I don't know that we'll cover it now. We might cover it in half an hour, I have no idea. But I would like to leave enough time to have a full conversation about it. And with your permission, I'd like to invite the superintendent, if he wants to, to weigh in. If he, if he has anything he wants to contribute, I am not comfortable having conversations in the third person about somebody who's sitting there. So here we are in the middle of the conversation about him and he's sitting there. So that's it.
Okay. Well, I will in one second. I do want to go back to a comment that I had made, and I, I'm really sincere about it, is my recommendation is, is as a board body, be cautious not to overreact, but be proactive in developing a plan going forward. So I know just the suggestion of putting the plan out there and, and taking a look at the plan and, you know, I, I don't want us to overreact to the information that we receive from the superintendent, but I do want us to...
With respect, I think it's too late. I think we've already reacted. So I think if we want to walk that back, if we want to have a reasonable conversation, I think it's appropriate to do that. And I think calling for a meeting next week, fine, let's have a reasonable conversation about it.
No, I, I still do, I still would like him to submit a resignation letter because I feel that in that resignation letter, he could give us a, a finite date that we need to have to know for sure this is the day that we know that we need to have someone in place. And I think that is just only respectful to us and this entire district so that it's not a cloud over the district of when and if, is he going to leave?
Again, with due respect, I'm not ready to do that tonight. I might be in a week and I might be in two weeks, but tonight I'm not ready to do that.
But you are prepared to...
I'm prepared to have a conver, we've already opened the conversation. To say I don't want to have a conversation is moot and irrelevant.
But at times...
I'm, I, I have no problem having the conversation at a time when we're prepared to have that, when we sit down and we allow enough time to have the conversation and we've given a little time to think about how we want to proceed with that conversation. I'm willing to do that, certainly.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
I'd just like to request, if we do meet April 2nd, if we can move back the time a little bit for me to get up here. Seeing that I don't have that other calendar, I work until 4:15. I don't mind leaving early, get up here for that. I just know that there's something going on that day and I'm, I'm a little concerned about, say definitely, that I, if we can make it 4:30 or...
Again, with, with due respect, the later we get, the harder it gets.
How about 4:30 to 6:00?
Again, that's still within the, the hour and a half, and so I've requested that we do longer.
How about 4:30 to 6:30?
I'm sorry, wasn't our time between 3:00 and 6:00?
It was, but you know, I want to be respectful. I mean...
It wasn't on that date, though.
Right.
That date was not given to us. That's why I made another...
So I think 4:30 to 6:30 is a good time.
Thank you.
It, it is not ideal for me, but I'll live with it to make it work.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
These are, I have 12-hour days, like, in a row. So the, the day after this is my 12-hour day with four hours of driving. And I'm not, I'm not trying to like, you know, everybody else has things they got to do too.
Right. All right, so...
I will make, I'll make it work.
Okay. Okay, so...
I'm going to put that on, but I know Mrs. Esplin is diligent in sending us invitations for meetings.
Okay. All right, so I will...
This is April 2nd, 4:30 to 6:30?
Mm-hmm. I'll work with Ms. Esplin to get that out within the 48 hours and work, make sure that we're in compliance.
Ma'am Chair, does Mrs. DiAgresta have to be there?
I, yes, she does. Mrs. DiAgresta?
Yes, ma'am.
You're there. Right. In, in working with her, I know that she's, that time seems to be good for her. So I do apologize, assuming that.
No, you're fine, thank you.
And that, and if you remember, we chose Tuesdays because she, she is typically available on Tuesdays. Okay? So let's, let's plan on that. And Dr. Rendell, do you have any final comments you'd like to share on that?
I don't choose to make any statements today.
Okay.
Ma'am Chair, I need direction still on knowing the carrier, please.
Oh.
And it's very uncomfortable for me at the moment in the absence of the CFO.
Sorry.
I've been reporting directly to Dr. Rendell. So I can't, I, it would be uncomfortable for me to take direction from him in regards to reporting this matter to the carrier. My suggestion is that we do it as soon as possible because again, strategy-wise, the more advanced notice we have for preparation, the better it is for us. And God forbid this matter turn to adverse tomorrow, that I've lost that time to protect the interest of the district. So as uncomfortable as it is, I would like to ask for direction from you in that regard, please.
Okay. So my understanding, this is just in case we did have to go to litigation and if we were to have to pay any cost for not honoring the contract correctly, that the insurance would cover that portion perhaps? Is that correct?
Correct, twofold. So in the email that I originally sent you, that the school board attorney was a copied on, we always want to give the carrier as much notice as possible. And then second, just as a reminder, that once we get into litigation, the carrier controls the appointment of the attorney. They'll generally take recommendations, but it's in accordance with, you know, however that policy is written. And then, so if you were to go out and to hire another defense attorney specific to this matter and you did it without the approval or direction of the carrier, you may not be reimbursed for those expenses. Again, as opposed to being proactive, which is what I'm requesting, that when the matter happens, then we get that direction right off the bat. It would be subject to your deductible and there are a number of different policies that could apply in this situation, depending on, you know, where it goes from here.
Well, I appreciate this and I know that it does put you in a situation, but you're just thinking of, in the best interest of, of the district, and this is something that I appreciate you bringing to us. I would, I, I'm hopeful that my board is in consensus. This is not saying that there is going to be litigation, but it's being proactive. If there is, then we have some type of coverage through insurance that we're currently...
I personally would be uncomfortable taking action without your direction.
Okay. So I just need consensus of three.
Yes.
Okay. So I will give you, if you'll, if you'll wait, I will give you the original copy I have that I just received in the mail and you can have that or I can email it to you.
I'm sure the electronic's fine, but again, I just wanted direction. I would not take that action without authority, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay. Any further discussion on this? No?
No.
Okay. All right, so Superintendent closing?
Do you have Board Member Matters?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do. Thank you for that. I have so many notes on my... All right. School Board Member Matters. I would like to start with Mrs. Behrberg.
Let me bring up a happy topic.
Yes.
Please mark your calendar for May 11th. I've been working with MCAN on a deep dive into the Lagoon and Literacy. I got involved since I'm a science person, STEM person, and it's going to be a STEM and Literacy event with a mural being created at the library, main library. And families are welcome and there are going to be lots of booths and activities and things for kids to do and families to do. So we have the mayor coming to read the book and there's a book involved and a mermaid is coming out of the water. So that's going to be May 11th. As I said before, I spent four days in Tallahassee. If you've never done that and sat in on a subcommittee meeting, I would advise you to do that sometime in your life. It was quite enlightening. Again, I had time with both of our representatives, Senator Mayfield, she was extremely busy. I got five minutes with her representative brawl. I was able to get more time. I haven't in there. So she, she actually was presenting a VPK bill and so I sat in on that bill when it went to the subcommittee. And there was, there was another VPK bill that was presented as well. They both went through subcommittee onto the Committee for Education. So if you're not following bills, I would suggest that you do that. There's a way that you can actually go on the website and actually follow the bills. I know that we get information that we receive as well, but it's also nice to look at, look at actually what's happening with all the bills that are going through. I also stopped in at the Department of Education. I got some questions answered about some things that parents had brought up to me. And I wanted to make sure that I went to the source and, because there was some question about whether or not our district was following it correctly. So I, I did go up and have a meeting with a specialist specifically about coaching certification. Having been a coach in our district, I was very familiar with what is required. However, I wasn't quite familiar with the new coaching certificate. I say new. When I left, that new coaching certificate came in, so it's not so new. But the, the requirements for that are specific to outside people that work in our district. And I wanted to get verification that that's true. And if so, there are some concerns I have about what's happening right now. Dr. Rendell and I had a lengthy discussion about that yesterday. He's going to get back to me on some more information about that before I bring it up for a discussion item in the future. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the Value Adjustment Board final meeting yesterday. It was pretty interesting and we were supposed to end yesterday, but in fact, there was a change to one of the items, so we've been called to another special meeting next week. But it was my first meeting and apparently they do not have regular meetings. They only meet as needed throughout the year. So I look forward to, I, I wouldn't want to consider yesterday as the beginning because it was their final meeting, but moving forward for the rest of the year, however that relationship would be. I also want to plug, I, I wanted to, if you have not heard, which by now I hope you have, the excitement that I have for STEAM Fest. It is coming up, it is this Saturday. It is put on by Vero Beach Academy. They are a small homeschool co-op school. And they do a phenomenal job putting together STEAM Fest for our entire community. The school district has a part of, in it, I believe. We're going to have teachers, I'm sure, I'm sure Dr. Rendell can chime in.
Twelve schools are participating.
Twelve schools are participating. It is such a wonderful opportunity. It is so exciting. I know I've said this before, but last year my son dissected a squid. It was so much fun, I wanted to do it myself. And, I mean, a real squid and used the ink and did ink art with it. It was super fun. So there, there are activities from morning until, I think, four o'clock is the, the end of their day, I'm not sure, but you need to get there, first come, first served for some of their special art activities. Otherwise, everything else is included with the, with the entrance fee. If I remember correctly, I think the entrance fee is $6, five or $6. And if you do not have any plans with your children, I highly suggest that you take them. It's good for children of all ages and it is fun. So I'm looking forward to that. And that is it.
Okay. Not much. I'm looking forward to the MCAN Gala next week, celebrating our partnership with MCAN. I wasn't able to go last year, so I'm excited to go this year. I had the pleasure and privilege of volunteering at Shrimp Fest in Sebastian in support of the Sebastian High School Wrestling Team. I think it was last Saturday, which was great and fun to support the team. Also want to commend another great celebratory event in the district, the Stars of the Year Lunch, supported by American Icon Brewery, who invited us and supported the entire event in celebration of some of the great, just stars we have in the district. So that was a lot of fun. It, it, it's fun to do the fun stuff because as everybody is well aware, it's not always fun. So it was delightful to get to do a few fun things in the past week. I'm looking forward to doing more of them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zork. I want to first say thank you to all of the district staff that have worked on the app. When I ran as a school board member and when I first became elected, I had just discussed with Dr. Rendell, the website and the app and the fact that, you know, not everyone has internet access at their home, but everyone has a phone. And if we're looking at increasing community and parent engagement, would he be interested in kind of following through with looking at this app for parents? And it was something that he took very seriously and I'm very happy to see it come to fruition. So I ask all parents, please, go to the App Store, go to Google Play or however you do it on an Android, and find the school district app. Please download it. Select your children's school so you get notification. Make sure you're linked to Focus. If you need help, contact someone at the district office. We have a hotline, 10 different phones ring, 10 different phones ring when you call for help, apparently. We will direct you to someone that can help you with Focus if you need help or with our app. So thank you very much for that to all of our district staff. We had a very productive day today with an excellent workshop where we spoke about panorama and new social emotional learning tool that we're, we're utilizing to be able to measure some of the social emotional growth of our students and to be able to inform some of the different things that we do as a school board and as superintendent and staff in supporting schools and supporting our students. It was very informative. I thank Dr. Rendell and staff for bringing that forward and, and we appreciate that. And I think all school board members were in agreement that it is a, a good step for us as a, as a district. We discussed a number of other things today, including a presentation from the Learning Alliance. And Dr. Rendell and his staff, Pam Dampier, Kelly Basura, have continued to work to foster a, a positive working relationship with this community partner who very much wants to be of help during the school day, after the school day, and we appreciate their support. They give an enormous amount of money, funders give an enormous amount of money in Indian River County to support the initiatives of the Learning Alliance, and it is truly our students and our teachers that benefit from that partnership. So thank you very much for your commitment to working with school district staff and supporting our students and families. I got to attend the Special Olympics Little Elites Event at Rosewood Magnet School last week, or actually, I'm sorry, the week before spring break. It was lovely. What a wonderful event to have at Rosewood Magnet Elementary School. I was able to speak with parents about the importance of Rosewood, the way that every student is valued on that campus and how much that means to them. Darren Homer from the Special Olympics let me know that on April 4th, there will be another Little Elites Event at Vero Beach High School. And they're going to try to get the Rosewood athletes to come and be able to watch that. So that's wonderful. If you are looking, I'm not exactly sure what time it starts. I want to say 9:30 because the last one started at 9:30, but please call the district office and we can get you some information about that if you'd like to come. and we can get you some information about that if you'd like to come attend. It was wonderful to see our students be supported and by their, their classmates and, and the school, and our, and other community partner that we work with, that we're very thankful for. The Superintendent's Art Gallery is something that we started last year, where we recognize student art from around the school district. We include all schools in the school district, including our charter schools. I'm very proud of the fact that this is a program that recognizes students from every school in our district. And so if you have gotten this in your child's backpack, it may have come home so far this week. This is an invitation, your child's art has been chosen as, as their grade winner from your school, and there will be a Best in Show from elementary school and secondary school, our secondary schools, and then a Superintendent's Choice Award. So this is April 10th. I hope all of the board members will attend. I know the superintendent and I will be there. It was a wonderful event last year. We had this room packed, and what a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our artists. I thank you, Executive Roundtable, for continuing to support this. If you walk the district office, you will see picture frames with student art in them, and it is a lovely sight to see. So again, thank you to the Executive Roundtable for continuing to support this event. I promise you, it will be a good time with food and music and students, and a lot of love and support from families. So just another wonderful thing to have happen. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, I would like to remind you that if you have, for your discussion items for the board meeting or our board discussion on April 9th, please email Nancy your discussion items by Friday at 2:00 P.M. Okay?
I had one thing that I forgot. I also, I, I'm also looking forward to the 25th Anniversary Gala at Sebastian High School. There's still tickets available. It's going to be an awesome event on April 6th, Friday night. I don't know if my fellow board members are going, but I sure am, and I'm really looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's closing. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On that same day, April 6th, I think it is, it's Saturday.
Yes, it's the 6th.
Is the Bill Wilson Elementary Track Meet at Sebastian River High School. So all of our elementary schools have students that are participating in track and field events. We kick off the morning, that morning, actually, with a Read Across the Field event. So it's a focus on literacy and sports, and how they can come together, and sponsored by the Learning Alliance. Again, the partner we had the workshop with today. So all of the elementary schools will be there at Sebastian River High School, Saturday the 6th, that morning. It'll be a great time, a lot of fun activities that you get to see all these students competing and enjoying working as teams and relays, and also individual competitions. It's quite a fun event. One of the few districts I've ever been in that has an elementary track meet in which most, if not all, elementary schools participate. It's a lot of fun. So if you're looking for something to do on the daytime on the 6th, before you go to Sebastian River High School celebration that night, that would be a great event to attend. I do want to give another shout-out to Doug Tuttle, those of you that were watching at the beginning of the meeting, or you were here at the beginning of the meeting. The holiday art contest that this local attorney sponsors is quite a neat thing. This is for students with disabilities to create holiday art, and they select a winner. Usually, it's an individual student, and they actually use that for their, their law firm's Christmas card each year. But the art is also framed and given to the student, and, and they do receive cash awards to the Vero Beach Bookstore, and all the different students who participate receive cash awards to the Vero Beach Bookstore. And this year, if you weren't watching, it was actually the pre-K, ESE class at Vero Beach Elementary that won as a class, because they did the artwork together as a class. I just think it's incredible that Mr. Tuttle has sponsored this on his own, you know, his own law firm has sponsored this and underwritten the costs associated with it for nine years, I believe. And I think it's fantastic to have such a community member doing something like that on behalf of our kids. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 9:26.